City Council Budget Retreat Session to Order. So, basically, the purpose of these meetings the next two nights is sort of to lay some assumptions, what we want to see in the budget, and more or less give the department chairs and the city manager direction to go off and prepare a budget to bring back to us in the fall. So this is where we sort of delve into what we'd like to see, and then the department heads go back and make it all happen, and play magic with the numbers, and show us that we've got millions of dollars in the bank that we didn't think we had, and all this other good stuff, so. So just remember that, this is sort of a planning thing, and with that, ground rules. Mr. Reed?
Yes, well, I was told you were a difficult group of people, so I came with 18 different ground rules.
That's good.
And I think maybe I'll do only one of them.
That's fine.
But let me just walk you through the agenda real quickly.
And let me just mention that Councilmember Sperry just joined us, and you have not missed anything.
Great. Well, just from a high-level view, you have two versions of the agenda, one's pretty broad, but then the other one has all the good material that you need to refer to during the next two nights, but from a very broad level, what we're trying to accomplish by the end of this evening is to see if you can reach a tentative agreement on the budget priorities for the next biennium. So to get there, we're first going to talk a little bit about 18 months into this biennium, what is the progress that's been achieved by the city toward the original goals you had for this biennium, or priorities. And then Joanne's going to do a refresher on priority-based budgeting, and give you an opportunity to talk with her about that, ask questions, and then talk a little bit about how has priority-based budgeting been reflected in the accomplishments so far in this biennium, and what is the effect that it might have on the 2017-28 biennium. And then we wanted to just ask you the same questions that Rob and I asked you in our interviews of you, because you had a lot of interesting answers, and we thought you should share it with each other and with the leadership team. So we're going to repeat a little bit of the interviews at 7:40 to set a context for the future. And then at 8:05, we'll really move into the kind of the meat of the night, in terms of what are your budget priorities for this next biennium. And then I think of this as a little bit of a brainstorm, as well as your own knowledge and expertise, so when we get to about 8:45, I think we could call them tentative priorities, and then we'll resume talking about them tomorrow night, and in the first half hour tomorrow night, try to kind of confirm those priorities, and then spend some time talking a little bit about what are the outcomes that you seek for each one of them. And in the agenda, it says, you know, what are two or three outcomes that you would be looking for. I have to say that when I look at all the materials prepared for today's meeting, and all of the department reports and the progress report, I think you're very used to, in fact, maybe even more than some bodies I work with, of coming up with specific outcomes that you're looking for, so I think you already have an advantage. And then at the end of the evening tomorrow night, we'll just do a little reflection on what did you think of these two days, and what does this portend for the coming year as the staff goes ahead and works on the budget for 2017, '18, and 2018. So that's what we're expecting to accomplish, and I hope that reflects what you told Rob and me you wanted to do, and makes it look like a worthwhile two evenings, since you've all worked eight-hour days and have busy lives, and now you're putting in a total of about eight hours into these two sessions. So, any reactions to the agenda, is this okay?
No, it certainly sounds fine to me.
I thought you invited us to a party.
Well, there will be food.
So, council goals and the 20-year vision, that seems to be next here.
Well, I was just going to say one thing about ground rules. I don't think you need too many. I'm told, and I've observed, you work well together. But I just would say that, you know, my role and responsibility is nothing more than to manage the clock, to make sure that I kind of gently move you along. Sometimes you'll see me do a little bit of summarizing, and I usually put it in the form of a question in case I get it wrong. One thing that three of the seven of you said to me, though, in terms of a ground rule, is could we please ask that everybody turns off their cellphones, so that everybody is focused on this evening and tomorrow night. So, those are the only ground rules that I propose, and I just wanted you to know, too, that after these two evenings are over, I'll take some responsibility for developing a draft summary that highlights the discussions, decisions, and agreements, and I'll send that to Rob, get him to look at it first in case I've made any mistakes, and then we'll get it to you shortly thereafter.
What I see here under you, we have goals and vision, and I'm assuming that's a check-in to make sure that these goals and visions that are outlined here are the same ones that we still share.
Yeah, I think they might have been put a little bit more in just, again, as context. Obviously, your goals, you worked on last January, and you've had your vision for a while, so.
Right. Yeah, the blue, underlined words aren't specific agenda items, they're just referring to documents that are in the packet. But I think it is good to take a quick look at the goals and the vision, and just quickly review that while we're here.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly want a check-in from the council to make sure that we are all in agreement, that these are our goals and these are our visions. Yes, we did, I think, got the vision statement from the Planning Commission, but we okayed it, so. Everybody okay?
And you may recall that in January, you actually took the goals from 11 down to 8, but not really.
Be careful, we'll go to 15.
Maybe in January, number 5, we'll be able to check that one off. That doesn't happen very often, huh?
Then you can move on to the next section?
Yeah, I think that's probably the best thing to do. City Manager, we're a little bit ahead of schedule here, but City Manager.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, this is just quickly going over progress on advancing your goals, and I thought it might be worthwhile just to take a peek at the City Manager's budget message that was part of the 2015-2016 biennium budget. We actually wrote that last fall of 2014, October to be more specific, of 2014. So that document is almost two years old, and so I was reading it recently, and it was kind of fun to see what's progressed since then, and what's popped up and wasn't in there. And I'll just briefly go over that, and in addition to the City Manager's budget message, you have multiple updates from my coworkers here. So you have CIP plan updates in here, several department memos that talk about economic development, and Target Zero, and the Planning Commission docket, and Code Amendment docket, and Development Fee Revenue and Permitting. Also, the 11 by 17 pages that look like this, that show our work plan updates. So tons of material. We won't go over all these updates unless you want to, but they're there for your reading pleasure, and hopefully you were able to read some of it before tonight. But the document I will flip through, if you could follow along with me, is the City Manager's budget message from October 2014. And this budget message started talking about priority-based budgeting, and how different outcomes were ranked, and how they were scored, and where they landed in their court files, and discussion on that had the then-city council goals. If you go to page 7, one thing that I want to mention here that was stated and is still true today, top of page 7, is that this budget continues to invest heavily in the city's core functions, including public safety, transportation, and parks. And it cites the pavement condition score of 82, which is kind of reflective of how the city's been spending its money. We actually want to talk a little bit more about pavement maintenance later tonight when we talk about the forecast. Also on page 7 there, it talks about all the things that had been done leading up to the fall of 2014 when it comes to pedestrian and bicycle safety. And then at the bottom of page 8, it talks about what we plan on doing in the next biennium for pedestrian and bicycle safety. And so there, on the bottom of page 8, it lists several infrastructure projects. Interestingly, if you look at that last bullet on page 8, it said, "South side of Northeast 181st, between 68th and 73rd." We must not have known it at the time, but now it's the north side, too, so. So that's a nice little development that's happened since then. And then if you go to page 9, there's several one-time sources of funding that we were going to use for some key initiatives. Number 3 there, you can see $350,000 funded from real estate excise tax for the neighborhood transportation improvements. And Chris Overlyce and Brett Shawk have just been doing a great job with the neighborhoods. All the neighborhood meetings are complete, and many, many changes are being implemented. And there's a good discussion on that, and one of the department updates later in the packet, but I'm very pleased with what's been going on there. I think it is going to be money well spent. And we actually want to take each of you, or several of you at a time, on a driving tour of these neighborhood transportation improvements. And we think we might be able to do that August or September. I think most, if not all, of the improvements will be installed by then, so we thought we'd just check out the minivan and have two or three of you go at a time, and we can drive you around the city and show you what's been physically put on the ground. Also, number 4, $350,000 from Strategic Opportunities for arterial crosswalk enhancements and school zone enhancement. I believe that money's been well-spent as well, and the department updates has a section on that as well, and how much that money's been spent, and how it's been spent. Number 5 is, didn't have a name at the time, but it's now what we know as Imagine Kenmore, the $250,000 from Strategic Opportunities Fund. Most of that money was spent on the outreach process, about $50,000 to $60,000 of that was spent on conceptual design plans for some park projects, and also some work for the sidewalk projects as well. So you all know where we're at on that, and overall, I thought it was just a really worthwhile project, and, you know, going to the voters this fall to be able to say that we did our homework, and we just did not pull projects out of the air, but we based it on what we believed the community's priorities were, so. Also, along the lines of pedestrian and bicycle safety, we added a traffic engineer position, and that position has been doing what we hoped it would. And Brett Shawk has been in that position, and he's been very effective in accomplishing great things. On the education and outreach piece, also on page 10 of the City Manager's budget message, Leslie Harris and interns that she's leveraged and others have done just a great job getting the word out, getting into schools, getting into community groups, really sending a strong message that we're serious about pedestrian and bicycle safety, and helping drivers and cyclists and pedestrians and other users know that we do mean business, and here are the ways to stay safe, and it's just been a really great way of promoting the city's image as well. On top of page 11, on the enforcement piece, again, we did not know this, but we have, since this letter was written, we have added that motorcycle, with the hope that it will provide that extra ability for law enforcement, and I've emphasized with the chief of police the need for crosswalk enforcement in particular. That was the main reason why we added the motorcycle, is because it's hard for a squad car to hide out at a corner on Bothell Way, waiting to see if people are going to violate the law on yielding pedestrians. But being able to have that motorcycle hop up on the corner and wait there is really much more effective when it comes to crosswalk enforcement. So that's the discussion that we had in the City Manager budget message when it came to pedestrian and bicycle safety. And then on page 11, we started talking about happy cities, happy Kenmore, and investing in that emotional infrastructure. Does Kenmore love its citizens, and do its citizens love it back? Do our citizens merely see Kenmore as a place to rest their heads at night, or do they spend their working, and do they spend their working and playing hours in other cities? Do our citizens view themselves as having a long-term relationship with their city? Are we emotionally attached to Kenmore? So we allocated some resources and time and things to create those love notes, and encourage and empower our citizens to do the same, and it's been really fun to see some of those love notes pop up throughout the city. And in April of 2015, we had Peter Kagayama come out to the city, and we had that event, and there are quite a few things that have since blossomed from the Peter Kagayama event. One of the most visible things is the mural that's now almost done on 73rd Avenue, the Why I Love Kenmore event, and a myriad of other things that have just been really fun. I think the message we were trying to tell our citizens is, you are empowered, and you have our permission, not that you needed it, but you have our permission to go forth and create love notes for this town. So, that's been really fun to watch and observe. On the economic development front, we reiterated the four main goals of the Economic Development Strategy, which are also incorporated into council goals, and various economic development initiatives and projects were underway back then and are still underway today, and Nancy Ausley's done an outstanding job of those things, and she gives you a really good update in her memo to you in one of the council updates. The incubator is at max capacity, and there's a waiting list now, and the virtual incubator is doing well, and we have Corey Hampton really taking it to the next level, and providing seminars and classes for Kenmore businesses, including his 5X Business Series. So just in keeping with council wanting this to be a high priority, we are putting resources and results to that. Lake Point, I said on page 14 that Lake Point continues to be our holy grail of economic development, and that we're seeing signs of life and developer activity on this property, and sure enough, we are. Widener has a purchase and sale agreement on the property, and we've been working with them, and as you know, we extended the CSDP, the Commercial Site Development Permit Extension, six months, and they have met the milestones they needed for it to be extended another six months. So right now, the commercial site development permit on Lake Point has been extended through December 31 of this year. We continue to work with them on issues such as transportation, environmental issues, buildability, and other things like that. Get Me to the Water, also on page 14, another council priority. The third paragraph there, it says, "Kenmore can bring the vision of its citizens to fruition and become a waterfront destination in its own right, not just a place to launch or store your boat, a place where boaters and visitors intentionally go to tour and have fun. In other words, Kenmore can become known for its beautiful waterfront and the public access it provides." So, we've made incremental steps in those areas. The KAWAC Group, Kenmore Waterfront Activities Center, has added programs and is becoming more established. They're a pretty new group. Last summer was their first full summer, and so this summer coming up is their second full summer, and they've got kids signed up for summer camps and ongoing practices, and we've got the Dragon Boat, and we've got the addition of a new rowing club this spring that's up and running. So leveraging the nonprofit volunteer resources of the community has definitely worked well, and like I said, the Imagine Kenmore process and the Walkways and Waterways ballot measure, if passed, would continue to progress this goal. If you look at page 16, there's, see those three numbered items there? It said, "To facilitate a healthy crew program in Kenmore while also fostering the growing membership and paddling activities of Kenmore, I envision the following. Number one, obtain outside resources of funding for the Shell House at Rhoda-Denron Park." And as you know, we had that on our legislative agenda. We were not successful in obtaining funding for a Shell House in the state legislative budget, and we'll need to talk about whether that request continues on to the next legislative session or not. Number two, maintain and further develop water access facilities for the newly acquired Squire's Landing property, and we can definitely check that box. And the third one, I think, is something we've moved away from, acquiring a neighborhood waterfront property that can provide additional waterfront access. I think instead of that, instead of acquiring more property, I think the direction I've gotten from you is develop what we have, thus the Imagine Kenmore process, and Squire's Landing being one of the projects in that package. Bothell Way, on bottom of page 16, do I need to say anything more? It speaks for itself. For a project of this size and complexity, I've been pleased with the small number of issues that have come up. I think it's been a well-managed project. I think Chris Overlyce made a good call early on on the design, and switching horses there a couple of years ago. I think that was painful, but I think that was the right call, and getting the project properly designed and well-designed ahead of going out to bid saved us a lot of grief and cost. So hats off to Chris and her team for managing this project. We're expecting to have a ribbon-cutting the morning of the 9th of September. We were going to do it at 11:00 a.m., but it was like 9:00, 9:11, and so we're going to change the time, so it's not so 9:11-ish, so. So, anyway. Watershed issues, page 17, top of the page. So, if you look at the second paragraph there, it says, "The Swamp Creek Basin Study, in conjunction with the Surface Water Plan Update scheduled to be completed very soon, will provide important guidance on how best to address our watershed issues as they relate to Swamp Creek." Well, soon after this City Manager letter was written, we got that Surface Water Plan Update and that Swamp Creek Basin Study. And the study said, and very succinctly, it said that that Swamp Creek Basin, especially along 73rd, is doing what it's supposed to do, and it migrates and deposits silt, and that's what it was naturally designed to do, and it's functioning pretty well, as kind of a meandering delta. And so that was really instructive, because we were thinking, well, oh, we might have to re-carve out the channel and do all of these big expensive things, but the advice we got from the experts were, leave it alone, it's doing what nature intended. So, does that mean we don't have surface water issues from upstream? No, and we need to continue to work with our neighbors to the north on minimizing additional silt and other deposits that come from upstream. Also, I remembered that I mentioned this 1.4 million in the Restricted Swamp Creek Basin Fund, if you can see that on page 17, third paragraph. That money continues to be restricted and unspendable, and I checked with Joanne, and just wanted to make sure that 1.4 million was still in there. I just checked with her a few minutes ago, and yep, 1.4 million is still in there, and it's still unspendable. So, that's something we haven't gotten around to, but we need to see what we can do to put that money to work, because I don't think any, yes, Councilmember Herbert?
What's happening with the interest on that money?
Joanne?
We haven't used any of the swamp. And we used some of that, and the other unrestricted money, last one, we didn't use any of the interest. As good. The mic's not switched on, Deb, thank you, Debbie. Should I repeat that? We haven't used any of the interest this biennium. There's not very much interest, as you can imagine with the low rates, there's a few thousand dollars in there. But last biennium, we did use some interest in the unrestricted funds to do dredging at Swamp Creek Park.
So I don't think our taxpayers intended to pay 1.4 million dollars and then just have it never be spent or used, or put in a situation where it can't be touched. So I think we need to continue to be able to talk to our legal counsel about ways to free that up, and either put it in a reserve fund for a rainy day, or actually put it to work.
Excuse me, is this 1.4 residual from the grant that we got from King County back 11, 12 years ago, that wasn't spent on the improvements in Swamp Creek?
That's correct. This was the portion that they said needed to be set aside in a permanent maintenance fund.
But we can't use it for maintenance?
That's the way we understand that agreement.
It's a maintenance fund that cannot be spent.
Right.
Interesting, okay.
So this is the Metro settlement from way back when?
Yes.
Councilmember?
Is there, sorry, is there any way that we might be able to use those funds for improvements at, say, Squire's or neighboring areas, with some of the work that, say, the Stream Alliance is working on, or something like that? Because I know that, like Eric Adnan was talking to, the Army Corps, and they're willing to match some funds. Is this something we could use as a matching fund to do some of that work?
The short answer right now, in its current state, is no. We can't spend it.
Okay.
But those are great ideas, yeah.
So what about the dredging we do at Wallace Swamp Creek Park? Is that a viable? Would that fit?
So Joanne's mentioned it, we've used the interest to help with that, plus others.
Right, we had an accumulation of interest, and we used that, and there was another pot that was available, non-restricted, and we used the balance of that, and we did do dredging at Swamp Creek Park in the last biennium, using those funds.
Councilmember Sperry?
Well, thank you for bringing this up, because I had assumed that this money was set aside purposely for the ongoing maintenance because of all the dredging and the sediment that we have to deal with routinely. So I appreciate you bringing this to our attention and hope that we can utilize that to maintain that important sediment thing.
Could it have been that when it was awarded to us, the interest rates were high enough that the revenue from the 1.4 would have been enough to continue the maintenance on the improvements?
That's a really good point, because it was significantly higher back in, what was that, about nineteen ninety or two thousand? And I was tracking the interest every year, and we actually had to do a report of that and how we spent it. But then the interest rates dropped, the interest earnings really have become very minimal, so it hasn't accumulated to the point where it's very effective for very much. But honestly, I haven't looked at that agreement in a few years.
But if it was in the agreement as sort of an endowment, that we would maintain it with the revenue from that endowment, in perpetuity, or whatever you say, forever.
That may have been the intent.
Yeah, didn't work out that way.
Refresh our memories on that. We've looked at it on and off over the years. I can't, I'm not smart enough to interpret it.
It seems silly to have 1.4 million dollars that's been given to you, but you better not spend it. What's it for?
It's called maintenance.
Yeah. I'm almost done, just two minutes more. So this city manager budget message only hit on the highlights, even though it was pretty, it was twenty-four pages. It was cut in half from the one two years prior to that, so... But, you know, so there's so much more going on in this budget than what you see in the city manager's budget message, and other things that have popped up. For example, you made heavy industry regulations a priority, and we responded accordingly. Also, there's a ton of workload, for example, in Debbie Bent's department regarding work with the planning commission, the wireless facility regulations that are going on right now, for example, all the comprehensive plan updates that happened last year in the transportation element, emergency preparedness in Brian's department. So just a multitude of things that don't get touched on here in this budget message, but I want to make sure that we try to at least mentally track a lot of those things. Turning to page twenty, discussion of human services. For this biennium, and this was on my recommendation, we set a funding amount of seven dollars and fifty-three cents per capita. And so when we get into the fall, we'll need to have a discussion on whether we stick with that number. Prelimarily, I'm recommending that we stick with that number. It's a little higher than the average of other cities, but given Kenmore's needs and our demographics, I think it's a good number. And I guess what I like about setting a per capita number is, as your population goes up, then so does the amount. And we're getting some numbers from the state, and it looks like our population's going up by about eight hundred to a thousand people, so we're going to be up in the twenty-two-thousand range. That's not official, but probably in the next month or two, we'll get some official numbers that say that instead of twenty-one thousand, we'll be about twenty-two thousand and change in our population. And then we talked about the six-year financial plan and economic outlook, and talked about potential other revenue sources. One thing on page twenty-three that I talk about is how property tax is limited to 1% growth per state law, and yet a lot of our operating costs, or what I call fixed costs, go up by more than 1%. And I gave an example of an actual property in Kenmore, that you can see that the city's share of property taxes paid in 2014 was actually less than what was paid ten years prior, in that graph on page twenty-three. By the way, that happened to be my house. I found that when you're talking about property tax, you really need to talk about it in actual houses. You should take a sampling of homes, because it's so hard to talk about the average home when it comes to property tax, and the discussion isn't facilitated very well when you're talking about the average home. So when I talk about property tax, I actually like to randomly pick a smattering of homes to find out what's happened and what they paid in property tax. This particular example, I chose my house, but back in 2004, they were paying more to the city in property tax than they were in 2014. Big reason for that was, for nine years, the city chose not to even take the 1% increase.
Isn't also, the reason was the fall in property values that happened in 2009?
But even if there's a fall in property values, that doesn't mean that the amount collected goes down, the total amount citywide. And in Kenmore's case, when property values went down, the city chose to just keep the total amount collected the same. And so I'm speaking about the average home, but the average home shouldn't have seen a change either way in the amount they paid the city during the recession.
That's assuming all homes increase or decrease together.
Yeah, that's right.
And some homes could escalate much more rapidly than others, and others lose value, and so that would affect the total.
Right. And so if you have a home that went up in value higher than the average in Kenmore, then you're going to see an increase in your property taxes. Vice versa, if your home goes up slower than the typical home in value, then you're going to see a reduction in your property taxes. So, anyway, I think I'll stop there. That's kind of a brief run-through. Hope that was brief. Oh, wow. Time flies when you're talking. But that was a run-through of the city manager's budget message from last fall and what's been done since then. And for the sake of time, you have all these department updates for your reading pleasure.
But we wanted to ask you, do you have any questions of clarification from what Rob just said, or anything you read in the department memos? And then also, we just wanted to ask you, before we take a break for dinner at six, what are some of your reactions or thoughts about the progress that's been made in achieving the budget, or advancing the budget priorities since January of 2015?
I'm sure we're going to probably talk about this later, but on bottom sixteen, page sixteen, you talk about Bothel Way being unfunded back then. The last segment, from City Limits to Sixty-first Street, where in reality, that is funded, but we are deciding perhaps not to do it.
Well, we don't know. We haven't talked about that.
That's what I'm saying. That's probably what we're going to be talking about, one of the things we're going to be talking about.
Yeah. Yeah, so thank you. There's another example that's something that's changed since this letter was written. We now have the final segment of Bothel Way funded. The money won't start coming until about four years from now, but yeah, it's in the state's transportation package, and I think hats off to the city and to our lobbyist for getting that in the package. I will be asking the question, when the time is right, should we spend that money on that last segment? How important is that last segment compared to other Bothel Way-related infrastructure needs that we might have?
Can you spend it on something else, or do you have to spend it on that segment?
Again, we need to have further discussions with our lobbyist, but she believes that the language was written flexible enough that it could be used on other segments of Bothel Way. But that's a very preliminary opinion that we need to research.
And that's also assuming we're not going to go back ever and ask for that money to do that again.
So that is a downside of moving that money.
And then the other thing I noticed was the bridge. You mentioned we had twelve, but in reality, that's also now.
Twenty.
Twenty.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. I always appreciate these opportunities to review all the wonderful work that the staff is doing, and I literally am amazed at the progress that is happening, and it's really fun to be a part of it, and I really appreciate all the hard work that you guys do. We have the easy part, we just say, "Build it," and then it happens. One thing that did jump out at me on page four, when we had the, during the process where we were asking the community to rank our different results, and maybe I looked at it differently, because we had just done the survey for the citizens regarding the Imagine Kenmore. And the thing that jumped out to me is how much higher the citizens ranked the effective mobility and connected reliable transportation system versus the council. And so I just wanted to highlight that. I feel like that's something we may want to keep in mind as we're moving forward, that that was definitely, I mean, obviously, it's not scientific, and it was a self-selected group, but it was interesting when I looked at that.
Wasn't this done before we had the pedestrian fatalities and all the pedestrian, wasn't it?
It was right after.
It was right after it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
But I'd like to also comment, when you look at all this stuff together and look back and see what we've accomplished, it's amazing. And it's not just us looking at it here and listing it all out when we have these retreats, but I'm hearing citizens commenting on it, too. One friend of ours who, at one point, was talking about all the improvements that we were planning in the city, and she says, "What do you mean? That's just like putting lipstick on a pig," you know? And she is amazed at how things are changing and how nice Five Twenty-Two looks. Notice, I didn't call it Bothel Way. Five Twenty-Two looks now, as you're driving through. It's just a lot of things all over the city are getting better, and it's noticeable, and I think the citizens are appreciating it. So thank you to everybody that's been involved in doing it. A lot of hard work.
Councilmember Sperry?
To kind of put more of a face on this, or more of a story, on Father's Day, I happened to be doing some local errands, and of course, it was beautiful and it was sunny. And so I'm driving to a grocery store, and I go past the new Caps Club, and then I look over at the 192, and it is packed, and there are people on bicycles, and there are people everywhere, and all these families out enjoying the new businesses, and, you know, go down to the Hodgepodge Cafe and get some food and talk to them, and see the people going down to Log Boom and everything. And it was really fun, seeing all these families out and enjoying all these new businesses and the new ways to, you know, walk and ride their bike and things like that. I kind of did have that sort of moment, like, wow, things have really changed here, this is cool. So, anyway, I thought that was kind of a fun thing.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, now here's an issue. We promised Patty that we would be breaking at six, so she warmed up dinner at twenty to six, because it's going to be served hot. So, Joanne, is there any part of this presentation that you're about to make that we could do in the next fourteen minutes or so?
Sure.
Should we start then?
Sure, let's jump in.
And before we do, I just really hope that you have read, or in the very near future, will read the department updates, because my coworkers and their teams worked really hard on these memos. So I really hope you do. So we wanted to give you these memos so you could have it in writing, but we also did it so we could save time in the meeting. But please make sure you read these, because this is really good information, and it's a result of a lot of hard work.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm still connected. Well, I hope everyone does still remember priority-based budgeting in some degree. Two years ago, we started that process and went down that road of trying to look at our budget through what our friends at the Center for Priority-Based Budgeting called a new lens. And we began, actually, you began, with setting the results for the community that you wanted to see achieved. And based on the goals and the vision and your other priorities, you identified seven results for the community, and then we defined those results with result maps. And those are in your packet. If you remember the color circles that were developed by the center. And then at the last retreat, someone suggested that perhaps it'd be nice to be able to look at those in an outline form. So those are in your packet also, under the tab Priority-Based Budgeting, towards the back. And in January, then, in order to start this process again at our retreat, I asked you to reexamine those results, reaffirm them, determine, are these the results we're going to take forward into the current process? And you did that. We didn't really change anything. Those were still really, really key for you, so we went forward with those results. And then after that, the staff jumped into this process and created a timeline and began updating our program inventory. So that was the first step, which was creating, looking at everything that we've done, everything that's budgeting, and developing an inventory of all the programs, all the services and projects that we do. And if you recall, two years ago, we had four hundred of those across the city. In some ways, we thought we were maybe a little too detailed, so some programs were combined, and we ended up with a three hundred and eighty-three this time, not a big reduction. And those inventories are also in your packet at the end of that tab. I printed them out for you, so you can see by department and function all of the programs that we determined were offered in the context of the fifteen-sixteen budget.
Is that the one in five font?
Pardon?
Is that the one in...
One in five-point.
Five-point font.
So we're immersed in the priority-based budgeting process now, as far as moving us to the end, and I'll get to what the end will be in a moment. So the first step was accomplished, you validated your results, the staff identified and recorded all of their program inventories, then we identified all the personnel costs in the city, and then every department went through their personnel and assigned their time to the programs that had been identified, so that we could say, what are the personnel costs associated with the programs that we offer? The next step will be looking at taking all the budget line items and allocating those to the programs as well. So what we'll do is turn our line item budget into a program budget, and then we'll have costs associated with every program once again. After that, we'll get into departmental teams, and each department will score the programs that they're responsible for, that they developed. And we score those against those result maps. How well does this program that we offer achieve those results? And we give it a score of one to four. Then, when that process is done, we mix it all up, and peer committees are established, and they look at the programs once again that they're not responsible for. So what we did two years ago, we had, you know, some surface water, some finance, maybe an engineering person, a parks person, make up a peer review committee that scored public safety programs. So it was a true peer review, and we went through the same process of evaluating each program against the results. I want to make sure you know what I'm talking about. about when I say results, like safe and secure community, prosperous, vibrant and sustainable economy, attractive, well-planned, enduring, desirable place to live and work. It was all coming back to you. Okay. Once those peer review scores are established and where there's differences between what the peer review committees come up with for a score and the departments come up with a score, we meet and try to resolve those. Then it, the Center for Priority-Based Budgeting kind of comes back into the picture and they take all of that data, all of those costs, all of those scores, and they create a resource alignment diagnostic tool. And for short, we'll call it the RAD tool. And that is illustrated by, by this outcome. And it's the last page under that tab. And what it will tell you is how well all the programs scored against the results that we want for the community and whether they fit into a quadrant of one or two, which means they scored really well, they're doing a good job of achieving the results that we have identified, or maybe not so much. And then they'll fall in maybe a category or quadrant three or four. So, it'll give you a visual and a dollar amount and a list of programs sorted by those quadrants. Two years ago, when we did this, we, we didn't take it much further. We had a presentation about that, some discussion about what they meant. And it was actually a very good income, outcome, because you could see that not a lot of city resources were being allocated to low quadrant programs. That was really a good-to-know, great outcome. And also, we could see that the overhead factor, which were more of the governance programs, was not high. It was about 11%. So, we weren't placing a lot of resources in just overhead and administration. This year, we're going to try to have a little bit more quality time with that tool. Look at it from different points of views and filters and the questions of, really have discussions about the questions. Are we mandated to do this? Does it achieve the result that we want? Are there partners who can help us achieve those results? Are there other, other factors that we can consider, especially in light of what might be a demand for resources and a shortage of resources? It's especially helpful if you have more demand for, for programs but not all the money there to allocate. So, when you have those competing forces, this could be a good tool for that. So, in, in essence, that, that's the priority-based budgeting process. Where, as I mentioned, allocating FTEs now, getting into costing and then peer review. We hope to have this tool by the end of August so that as we are developing our 1718 budget, we'll have that to refer to and have conversations about, well, what about this versus that? And as new, new initiatives come up, we can kind of think of them in terms of achieving the results of the community. And, you know, do they really do that or, or not? So, that's where we're going with priority-based budgeting. We also had discussion then that this seems like a really logical fit for capital budgeting. When we develop our capital budgets, we often think in terms of priorities and costs, limited resources, leveraging our partners. So, we've been working with the Center for Priority-Based Budgeting to build the capital budgeting piece into the tool without mixing it all up with all of our operational programs. When we were doing it two years ago on paper, it actually seemed simple. Now they're, we're doing it in an online tool, so they actually have to reprogram the process to allow us to do that, even though it seemed very intuitive. So, we think we've got there. We're going to give that a shot too and see, and see how that goes. But logically, it seems like that would be a really good fit. There might be a couple of additional attributes you want to look at with a capital project such as the, you know, leveraging your funding sources or your funding partners. You know, is this a project where we can really bring in TIB or WashDOT or other, other agencies to help us accomplish it? So, that might give a project a really good score versus something that we may have to take on ourselves. So, we are making progress in that regard. So, that's it in a nutshell. And I wondered if you had specific questions about the process or where we're going with it.
Jessica Head, you were first.
So, I was wondering, you know, last time we did this, we had a pretty robust citizen input component to it. What do we think that's going to look like this time around?
I don't know what it'll look like. I would like to do that this summer as another onsite citizen meeting. And I had an intern help me with the survey monkey, but I'm sure we can figure out a way to do that again. That's where we got the most of the results. There weren't a lot of people who attended the, the open house, but maybe word will get around that.
All right, thanks.
It could be fun.
Just provide brownies or something, right?
Okay.
So, do we get a royalty if we help them improve their product and they sell it to other people?
You would think so. I think we're on the cutting edge of this process, asking for and really pushing for capital budgeting. I've come to realize that because it has not been put in place. And I'm thinking, why not? I'm sure there's other entities that would, would appreciate it, but maybe they found a way around. But we're really pushing for a way to use it in the tool, keep it separate so you can just look at capital, just look at operations, but still have the same procedures to, to get there.
Yeah, you've touched on it with capital projects being included in it this time. But previously, with the bulk of all the programs were general fund programs. And we had some street fund and some soft, surface water. But that was the extent of it. We have a number of other funds that, in addition to the capital funds too, that, like council, for example. Where do we spend our money for the city council? Well, that's not involved in this priority base either, is it? Is it?
Yes, it is.
Is that under general fund?
Every, every general fund department and line items included in it. So, yes, we're capturing that too.
Well, if we do the capital projects, is that everything?
That would be everything because if we cover street, surface water in general, those are our operational funds. Capital covers street, parks and surface water. Our other funds are pretty much resources. Our impact fees are resources. They don't, it doesn't accomplish anything in and of itself. So, part of the process of the PBB is to show then where resources are coming from. And that's the bulk of the rest of our funds.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Thanks, Joanne. So, when I was looking at the, a very small print at the end, that's okay, it's fine. I have glasses now. I can see. And I was looking, I was trying to just, I noticed that public records request came up as a program a number of different times under a number of different departments, which I get because, you know, there's a lot of aspects to it. So, with that, is there a way to utilize the tool to say, you know, what's the total that the organization has to, to spend to fulfill public records requests?
Absolutely. That's, that's one of the really cool features about it is because there are a number of functions, that just being one, that affect many, many different departments. We know we're all spending time on this versus that and public records. And in this tool, we can, with just one filter, pull up all of those across the organization and find out what is the true personnel and, and other costs that go into managing that.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Anything else before we break for dinner? Okay, we just went a couple minutes over, so we shouldn't keep Patty waiting. So, dinner should be ready for you. So, we'll come back in about 15 minutes and keep working with Joanne. We specifically 6:20.
I have a question, probably for the two of you guys.
Sure.
I was wondering how hard it would be to get information on how much money we've done in match, matches for grants and how much grant money we've got for all the different areas. So, for the sidewalks, the roads, parks and wrecks, any other area I've missed. So, it's almost like a return on investment. This piece that we put in, we get back this much.
Over a certain period of time? How far back you want to go?
I don't know, 10 years? That's why I think it would be hard. So, because to tell, a point I want to make is to our citizens, we are using your money well. We are taking your money and we are investing it in a way that's giving you a huge return for what we're spending. So, I think that's a powerful message. So, I'm thinking of it as we move into the bond message, we're asking you for more money. Here's proving we've used your money well. So, it's kind of part of that bond discussion that we, we are very careful. We're very fiscally conservative, grow care. And look what we've done. Because I bet, I bet it's five to one return on investment.
Well, we certainly have all that data.
So, I guess I, you know, I don't want you to spend hours and hours and hours on it. But, but I think it would be helpful to have that information.
Okay, okay.
Well, we could certainly think how far back we can easily go.
Yeah, so if you could go back four years easily, well, then, easily.
But it would make sense to me to go back to the inception of the 522 project.
That would be the, yeah.
Yeah, because that's where, that's the big money. That's when, I think it was about 2000.
It's good that we, you know. Hey, your daughter's still in school for the year.
Yes, she's in fourth grade next year.
Fourth grade? How did that happen in just a moment?
I don't know.
Are you kind of having a, is it?
Every day, every day I look at her. She just score like a weed.
Now, how is she as far as height in her class?
She's pretty tall, I think. I mean, I don't.
You're tall. I've never met your wife, or?
My wife's not short. 5'8", 5'9". My mom's five, my mom's 5'11".
Stacy. So, another thing to think of.
And daddy, is he in LA?
Yeah, she's in, it's her nine, 69. So, she's starting on a little soccer thing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sunday.
That would just be so bad.
Where do they have the ultimate frisbee?
Same point, Madison Park.
Hey, you know, that reminded me of something. I know that friends talked about it, also Twins Springs place, you know, maybe doing our ultimate frisbee there?
Well, no, disc golf.
Oh, disc golf. See, I didn't even know my sports.
Ultimate frisbee is kind of like football with a frisbee, I think.
You have to bring us, you have to show us some pictures. Driving by Twins Springs.
Yeah, I need to, I need to get ahold of this guy that I used to know who developed, he designed, he's designed a couple of disc golf courses around here. I've been having a, kind of a hard time getting ahold of him. I may as have to camp out. I know he hangs out the mall at Terror Springs quite a bit. I may as have to camp out there too.
Like that freaky person just standing there with a frisbee?
And then just like, and then just drag him over there and see what he thinks. Because I love to get his just kind of general sense of yes.
Maybe you could, you know, also let your, your OTs do well or your enthusiasts.
Well, that's actually something that, you know, there's a course that I used to play a lot during, in college. I mean, a lot of the work was done with all cheer. A lot of the work, trail clearing, that's pouring concrete pads.
I've got some meals out.
You know, a lot of that can be done.
Okay, so ultimate frisbee is one whole thing?
Yeah, that's a field sport.
And this is what it gets?
Disc golf.
This like D.I.S.C.
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right.
It's like golf, it's golf, but with some person. Yeah, the hole is like, yeah, the hole is a hole that comes out of the ground that has a basket at the bottom and a chain. So, you hit the chain, they stop it and it knocks you to the basket.
That's cool.
So, and the, you know, the basket.
Sounds like you played it too.
We had one in our yard.
Really?
Not a whole thing, the stance and sort of.
It can be very meditative, you know. You buy a bunch of hudders and it's.
Our house is on a really big hill though, so it's. But I bring it to play day.
Oh, yum, yum. Oh, yeah, no, it's.
So, is, so there's a portability aspect to what you have?
Well, they're, they're, yeah, they're portable ones. And if you're doing a course, you would go and pour, yeah, you pour out a post.
Or they're supposed to go on the next week.
Right. Now, they're more permanent kind of public parks. Lots of a little happy, more happy. But that's, that's, grass is going to walk me, you know, cities and, you know, maybe that's a hole, you know. And then you add in the cost of the concrete for a pad where you go.
Eagle Scout projects, Anne?
Oh, I know, I love Eagle Scout projects. I mean, I'll never do these Eagle Scout projects for sale. I'll never do this to, I mean, it's just like what, what the city has to spend to make something happen.
But it's more expensive, like if you Eagle Scout those.
Well, but, you know, I, I'm preparing for like other parks. But I can't, everyone got a place to.
No, I'm not sure. I, I.
It's a multi-purpose too, because, you know. As long as nobody's playing.
As long as they're careful and people know what they are, yes. But getting whacked in the head by a frisbee that somebody's throw was going to go under your ass.
I'd have to say that more people not like are playing on a, you know, 24-hour-a-day basis.
I don't know. If you go over to the one over by North Gate, I still saw it, it's a while. It's, we have, there's some paths like through the back that to connect a couple different neighborhoods that people use, but those are also. And there's trees and brushes and stuff and stuff. And at one point, the city finally put up some money for some holes and nettings. Because there was a, yeah, the first hole was right against the street. So, a lot of frisbees would go this way, right into the street. And I remember I had one that like a car was coming out of the hill and it just got wrong on the wind. And it went right under the car, about underneath as they were driving. I was like, oh, I'm glad I hit there. And like the windshield half a second later, you know, it's like, it's just big, netting. But couldn't have been sure. I wish I worried about that over there.
People will be just jumping in the wetlands all the time.
So, guess what I saw while I was driving by? Deer, and it was kind of, I'm sure it was downstairs from road, you know, all that cob lab, grass and water. So, I mean.
Thank you.
Yeah, exactly.
True. Oh, thank you.
It's not breathing in here on my phone.
I, I had to actually go to the website. Yeah.
I'd like call, I had to call. And I was like, I think I saw these words on.
I know. It was, it was not easily reached. No, I actually went to the website.
Well, it was on my phone and it just was almost completely.
Blurry, yeah, I agree.
So, it's like, I just saw her sign. Why didn't we just get?
I don't know.
It seems unnecessary, so.
I know, I, oh, maybe I do it. I do.
Yeah, it looks like, it looks like there's something.
I've got some sauce.
Now, there's a hamburger patty that is.
No, it's not that bad. It's, it's pretty simple. I just want, if anybody needs it reheated or heated up more, let me know. Is yours hot enough, Joanne? Is yours hot enough, Joanne?
Yeah, soup and salad. What'd you get?
Look at that patty.
Wow, that's a big one.
Subblock saved, imagine, PMJ, around this thing.
Can't do it. You can't?
Yeah.
Yeah, over on the edge. This goes with what's coming next.
Anybody need air nuked for another minute or two? Anything okay?
Good, thank you.
And did this? Did this go to the sea?
Yeah. It has to.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Like a price, you know, I can see Mallory here, and you can see.
Too late to be serving food, if you can see right near off in the distance. He would be just minutes away.
Almost.
Yeah.
For the, for the bond issue, if we save us, you know, for every dollar we were given, we have used it, so you get $5.
Sure.
Representing, representing your money.
Yeah, so down the.
Sure, my fault.
Oh, yeah.
But then it comes down to the street work, so once we get, we got back.
They didn't pay for your plane tickets over there, did they? They didn't pay for your plane tickets, did they?
No.
Yeah, over on the edge. This goes with what's coming next.
Anybody need air nuked for another minute or two? Anything okay?
Good, thank you.
And did this? Did this go to the sea?
Yeah.
It has to.
It was just blurry, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
A little bit too late to be serving food, if you can see right near off in the distance.
He would be just minutes away.
Should we, I guess it'd be hard.
Almost.
Yeah.
For the, for the bond issue, if we save us, you know, for every dollar we were given, we have used it, so you get $5.
Sure.
Representing, representing your money.
So where was your last trip?
Yeah, so down the.
Sure, my fault.
But then it comes down to the street work, so once we get, we got back.
They didn't pay for your plane tickets over there, did they? They didn't pay for your plane tickets, did they?
No.
Again, we were, we're forecasting that we'll be able to maintain.
Can I take this?
Yeah, thank you. I was just gonna do that myself, but thank you. Everybody, I've let you eat a little bit longer than I said for then our scheduled time because for one thing I wanted Joanne to be able to eat and I thought we should probably just get a little bit more eaten then before we start and we're running pretty far advanced, but why don't we start like in two minutes? So again, if you have to get anything else to drink or use bathrooms or anything like that, we could start like in two minutes. Are they coming? Oh, okay. You only have to wait one hour, Patty said. There'll be a nice mid-break. So Joanne has walked you through as a refresher the priority-based budgeting and now she's gonna show you the current trends and future projections. So we're gonna talk a little bit about the financial, six-year financial forecast. She passed out this memo too that's not part of the packet, but now it's in front of you. So with that, I'll turn it over to Joanne.
Thank you. What I passed out to you are the assumptions, because I was still tweaking this today. These are the assumptions that went into the forecast as you'll see it tonight. I wanted to make sure that it was pretty clear what's built in there and if there's some discussion or other assumptions you don't understand or want to see, then we can talk about those. In January, you saw the six-year forecast and this forecast is built on that, but at that point in time, we had not yet closed out the 2015 year. So those were estimates and those estimates turned out to be lower than what we actually experienced for 2015. So this model does have the actuals in it and then new estimates for 2016. In most cases, I did a kind of a pretty quick and dirty estimate for 16, assuming the same, in most cases, the same level of revenues and expenditures as 15, because we're still tracking pretty well with that year. I did modify property tax, salaries and benefits go up, they're not the same as they were last year, and inter-fund transfers are different. So the result of the model and these expenditures that I've incorporated into it, I thought it'd be good to show you on the screen, because it actually is an online tool that can be used and manipulated and changed. This first graph combines the general fund and the street fund and it, the blue bars show those fund balances of those two funds combined over time, beginning with 2015 and going forward into two, three, three more bienniums. So the 17, 18 biennium, the 19, 20, and the 21, 22. And at this point in time, it looks quite positive with the work that we've done and the assumptions that we've made. Your fund balance as a percentage of revenue is very stable across those years, hovering around, you know, the low, low 30 percent, even up to as much as 38 percent. So that was a really, really positive outcome. The chart next to it is also combined for both funds and it shows you the blue revenue line over that same period of time and the dotted red expenditure line. And our goal has, is always to create a forecast or look ahead and keep those lines from crossing in that expenditures are exceeding revenues. And in this case, they do, out in the year 2021. If you look at the, these are the numbers that support the chart. We have a positive experience in 2015, 16 with this high expenditure line due to the fact that we moved over a million dollars from the general fund into the strategic opportunities fund in 2015. And we have some other significant expenditures for capital in 2016. But then those expenditures drop off because I haven't anticipated repeating that. So they drop off to, to about this level and then slowly start to creep up over time, whereas the revenues are pretty much slowly, slowly rising over that period of time. So in that first, in the next biennium, the net effect of the revenues and expenditures show a positive balance situation of $600,000 and some thousand dollars. The 19, 20 biennium is still positive with a net positive of $90,000. But when you get out to these two outer years, 2021 is, the expenditures exceed the revenues by 160,000 and 20, 22 by 320,000. So this is where we want to be cognizant of the ever, ever-increasing pace of expenditures and the slow rise of revenues in those outer years. But the next two bienniums don't appear to present a lot of trouble at this point. The other thing that we're able to do with this, these graphs and models is look at just the general fund. So I'll show you that real quickly. And again, it's, the fund balance is quite stable over the six, seven-year period and the revenues and expenditures are in pretty good shape again until you get to 2021. And you can do the same thing with the street fund. Again, we were forecasting that we'll be able to maintain a steady and stable fund balance and keep the revenues on pace overall with the expenditures. There's, there's some up and down here, but overall, it's, it's a pretty well-balanced picture. The reason that this dip exists in 2016 is because in 2015, we made the decision to transfer $400,000 of the reserves in the street fund to support some of the sidewalk projects. So the bulk of that occurred in 15. Not so much of that is gonna happen in 16. So that brings us down to our new level and then it starts increasing again over time. We talked last January too about how you can build in some what-ifs and some different scenarios. I didn't know if you wanted to take time to explore how that works or not. We thought, well, what would happen if we added some additional utility taxes out in the outer years or additional, like a garbage franchise fee in the outer years? Or what if we had, you know, a conservative budgeting estimate built in? But we haven't incorporated any of those what-ifs into these scenarios at this time. So right now, that's, that's all I have to show you unless you would like me to do some manipulation with the tool. But I wanted you to see the context of the current and future bienniums and know that, you know, in those outer years, you got to year five, year six, that's when the lines start to cross again. I don't know the answer.
So it wouldn't be a franchise fee, it would be a utility tax. And yes, we can do that now. But Joanne, did you want to go into some of the assumptions like how development services fee revenues drop in 2017 and things like that?
Sure, I'll be happy to do that. Okay, sure. We did. I don't know the plan on that going forward. It's, it's, it's in a, it's being paid out of the strategic opportunities fund, which is like a capital fund. It's not built into this scenario.
Yeah, that, that's one time out of strategic ops, doesn't even show it coming out of general fund. And Chris, do you want to talk about, my sense from Brett is that if, if he went through this again with the neighborhoods, he wouldn't have 350,000 to spend. Your thoughts, Chris?
I think that's true. I think we're, some of the things that are coming out of the neighborhood plans are actually arterial, arterial improvements folks would like to see. I still think it's a little too early to tell. A lot of our projects aren't on the street. We've been wondering, once neighborhoods start to see things happening, if there would be a desire for more. So I, I've kinda thought it was a budget conversation for this fall, once more improvements are in, but I think another 350 sounds high. And we certainly have not assumed that it's going to continue.
The one aspect of that that does affect the forecast, and it's mentioned here in the assumptions, and I'll go through them, is that we hired the, the traffic engineer as a four-year limited-term position. So my forecast, based on that, does show that that position ends in 20, 20?
June 2020.
June 2020. Well, okay, I should explain that. It is, that's longer than a four-year position, but I think we made the determination, we would keep it a little bit longer than that, but still end it at some point. So we pushed it out to 2020. So my assumption shows half, going away mid-year 2020. Some other assumptions that I think you should know about, I've been as conservative as I feel I should be on the property tax levies and the sales tax increases. The property tax includes a 2% increase over the next several years, which could be new construction and a levy or new construction. But I do feel at some point, new construction is going to fall off. So it is reflected that 1.5% increase in the levy is what is built in in 2021. Sales tax, this biennium, we've been, we've had very generous sales taxes, a lot of that due to new construction across the street. So the Main Street project and the Link project have brought in, you know, pretty high sales tax revenues, over, you know, over $100,000. I show that in 2017 and 2018, that drops away. I don't know of any projects we have of that magnitude, so I've reduced the sales tax over those two years, 5% each year. Not too much going on with gas and electric utility taxes. I have those increasing at 2%, but no increases in cell and phone. Franchise fees, especially the cable, have reliably increased over time, so I have those inflated at 2%. But anticipating the slowdown in development or a possible recession, I reduced all of the development-related revenues, like building permits and land use fees and inspections by 30% in 2017. And then I keep that steady over time. Fuel tax, we're gonna get a little bit more fuel tax, which is good. It came out of the transportation legislation that was passed last year. Based on my calculation, the per-capita distribution might get us another $35,000. I've put that in there. It's not huge, but I wanted to recognize it. I haven't changed anything with salaries and wages. My assumptions are that salaries over time increase 4% and benefits 6%. What helped us a lot in this biennium was that our 2016 medical insurance premiums only increased 1%. And that was due to 2% of that being a wellness credit that we earned against the 3% premium increase. So that was helpful. On the other expenses, I have across the board, pretty much public safety, legal, supplies, services increasing 2%. The general fund contributing $60,000 a year to Kenmore Village for miscellaneous operational expenses, perhaps some staff. Again, we had a two-year temporary permit specialist in, in this year's budget. I have that being removed in 2018 and the four-year limited-term traffic engineer position going away in 2020. Didn't change anything with the human service donations. What's not in here and is probably pretty important and will have to be incorporated soon, though, once we get a handle on those, we have Morelands Park actively planned now. That will bring a new park online and the ball fields as well. So you will see in my assumptions that there has been no, no element built in for increased maintenance on those parks. And that is something that when we develop this upcoming budget, we might want to consider because it could possibly affect this coming biennium. And along with that, I haven't assumed any revenue source that would be new to offset that as well or to support those expenses. So those are some of the things that are happening down the road, but I have not yet modified the, the forecast to include them. If there's anything else that you think might be important to add, I'd like to, to hear that or anything about the assumptions too.
So a question on the human services donation, maintaining at the current level, does that mean the current rate per capita funding or the current flat rate level?
The current dollar rate that we've been allocated for this year. I didn't, I have not yet done it on a per capita basis. That might be something new for the new biennium.
Okay, thank you.
It'd be a really minimal difference.
Yeah.
Yeah. You mentioned revenue on parks, revenue sources. Is there a revenue from the usage, the field usage from Little League or whatever? Do they pay a, a fee to Bastille now to use those fields? And would we be getting that either through the ones up at Bastille or Morelands?
Well, we get a very minimal amount from Bastille, maybe about $5,000, $6,000 a year.
No, but, but the leagues pay Bastille to use those fields or the leagues and free of charge? Yeah. And so that would then go to the fields at, at St. Edward, wouldn't they? If they were using those fields. And would it go to the state or would it come to us since we're, we have the fields? And same thing with Morelands.
That's, that's a good question. I don't know the answer to that question. I just know that Bastille is paying us for some of the use of those fields, but I don't know what the leagues are paying, because I don't see it. It doesn't come to our books.
I'm, I'm assuming that we would get revenue from field use fees for the St. Edward ball fields and perhaps Morelands. Yeah.
It doesn't, would, might not cover the total expense of maintenance, but it would help.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If the bond passes for park improvements, and when would those come online if that passed? Do you know?
Early 2020s.
Okay, so it's a ways out.
Yeah, but you're correct. We haven't built anything into the assumptions at this time. Again, this is kind of the, the big one. There's nothing in here for Lake Point either. There's no development fees. There's, there's no fees of any kind or revenue or expenditures related to Lake Point, other than staff time. Consultant.
Good point. Well, it seems like, and this, I think really hits it too, it, it does seem like parks in general are a pretty big variable in this and could easily throw our, our assumptions out of whack depending on what happens. I know we don't, there's so many unknowns with the parks right now, but just, you know, whether it's negotiations with North Shore School District on Morelands or what happens with St. Ed, you know, what happens if the bond passes. But these are all really big projects that really could have reasonably large implications on our maintenance side.
Very true, very true. I think that's where, coming back to the prior topic, PBB, priority-based budgeting, will help you as you weigh those costs against other programs that you might want to fund. But dollars are needed to, for, for maintenance for the new projects.
So am I right in assuming here that we're not anticipating any ball field maintenance costs until 19? So that means we won't see any construction until 18?
So first of all, you need to fund the ball fields, the construction, and you haven't decided how those will be funded. We'll hopefully get that figured out during this biennial budget process? Yeah. And then the timing of when the ball fields get built, it still also needs to be figured out. It would be really rushing it to build them in 17. 18 might be more realistic. And then if they get built in 18, then they come online in 19. So.
Councilman O'Kurtis? What would be the net effect if St. Edward was actually developed or Lake Point? Would it be a positive or a negative? I would think they'd both be positives, but since it's ones in a state park, I don't know if we actually get any money if they build things.
You're talking about the seminary?
Yeah.
Not the ball fields.
Not the ball fields. I'm talking about the seminary building.
I think there would be a net, a net positive just in traffic, tourism, people in town. There would be likely some tax on services.
Charges on the, the building, on the construction costs, would there be taxes on that?
Sales tax.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so it's, it's a government-owned building, but being improved by and leased by the private sector. So instead of paying property tax, they pay what they call leasehold excise tax. And so the city, or so on construction improvements, they pay sales tax, but they'd also pay leasehold excise tax. And then once the building's up and running and being leased, they would pay leasehold excise tax. It's actually 12.84% per year to the state and the city gets a portion of that leasehold excise tax. How much, we haven't calculated. We, we wouldn't even presume to know. Has that been a factor in how we approach this project? No, it hasn't. It hasn't been about leasehold excise tax. It's been more about the city's image and amenities for the city and, and economic development overall.
Thank you.
Kind of to follow up on that, do, is there, since the wagon wheel is no longer leasing or renting rooms, do we get, is there any hotel motel type room tax at all that we've, I've never seen it in a budget line item, but maybe it was there and it was so small that...
You know, that's, that's a good point. The, if, if, if the seminary building became a lodge, then the city would then decide whether to impose a lodging tax. And right now, we have one motel in the city, the Kenmore Inn, and we don't collect lodging tax. But if you wanted to, once the lodge came on board, you could impose a lodging tax. That money is really restricted by state law. You can only use it for what they call heads in beds, meaning you can only use the money to promote more people spending the night and, and, in lodging in Kenmore. You also have to appoint a lodging tax advisory committee of citizens and any budget decisions on how to spend lodging tax money has to go through that committee first before it comes to you. So we'd have to staff a new committee. We, the money would be restricted on how we spend it.
Do, do most cities, because it's something I really don't know about, do most cities have a, a tax on hotel motel?
I would say yes. I, maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but Gig Harbor had one and the only reason they had one is if they didn't have one, Pierce County was gonna get the money somehow. And so they decided to impose one so they'd keep the money local.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Programming costs for the town green, is that someplace other than on this memo? Is that already?
It is someplace other than this memo, other than the staffing. So our volunteer and special events supervisor is funded out of the general fund and she's incorporated here. But the other operational expenses are in the Kenmore Village Fund.
In what fund?
The Kenmore Village Fund.
Oh, okay, thanks.
So this general fund assumes, and her forecast assumes, an ongoing subsidy from the general fund to the Kenmore Village Fund to fund those programming operations? Can I point out one thing? Okay. If you look at that chart, so that's the street fund, fund balance, the blue lines. The general fund had fund balance of around 30, 35% of operating revenues. The street fund fund balance has, is more at the 70 to 80% of operating revenue, which is high.
I, I would say that that's what happened this current biennium and we use some of that fund balance for one-time expenses. For the sidewalks, we may find ourselves wanting to do that again.
Yeah, our own budget policies shoot for a fund balance of about, is it 15%? Joanne?
20.
20%. And a lot of cities are comfortable with 10 to 15% of their fund balance being at, at, as a percentage of their operating revenue.
Thank you. Joanne, on the sales tax, I know that we've had a lot more than usual because of Joanne, on the sales tax, I know that we've had a lot more than usual because of construction. Apart from the construction side of things, are there any trends or anything that seem to be happening that might be positive trends in the sales tax for the city or less than positive?
Good question. Every, every month in my monthly report, I show it, there's a sales tax graph. And I pay attention to that because I like to see what the other segments of the community, how they're performing. So that, you know, there's wholesale, there's retail, there's services. And all of those segments are rising almost to their peak and beyond than what I've, we've experienced in the last 10 years. They're all doing really well. Even, even the, with the result of destination-based sales tax, we're, we're really just starting to creep up. It's been a very slow creep, but they're all trending in a positive direction.
That's good news. That's not just one. It seems to be more across the board a little bit.
It is across the board, yeah. Especially retail, I was happy to see when, when retail, because we don't have the type of retail activities that fluctuate a lot with the economy such as, oh, car lots or they're, they're pretty inelastic. So our big sales tax producers are, you know, like the Safeways and the Rides, Kenmore Camera, of course, you know, Murphy's Auction, Murphy's Auction's a little bit more elastic, but, but generally, they don't fluctuate wildly. And in total, they're all trending slowly upwards.
Thank you.
Actually, when you said that about Murphy Auction, it reminded me, when I, I remember asking Bob Hensel once about how his business is cyclical and, and with regards to elasticity, he was telling me that when the economy's bad is actually oftentimes when they do well because businesses are failing, which is kind of an awful way to look at it, but it's good for his business. So I thought that was kind of interesting. I did want to, I had a question on the maintenance, the additional maintenance cost for 522. Is that, was that boosted up in our, I guess that's probably not a question for you, but in the assumptions for all the, you know, additional landscaping and everything?
No, it hasn't, it hasn't been. I've got a 2% inflator for all kinds of landscape and right-of, right-of-way maintenance, but there's nothing extraordinary incorporated into the forecast at this point. But something to talk to Chris about.
Well, I think in addition to that is the surface water. You have a brand-new surface water system out there that you didn't have before. So we will have the surface water fees, so that is different, but we have rising costs in the surface water program because of new projects. And I would like to remind you too that the signals on 522 are still the state DOT's responsibility, but once we hit a population of 25,000, they'll be our cost and responsibility. So that's still a ways out, but maybe not that long. Nope, maybe not.
Thank you. Any other questions? We had put onto the, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Curtis. So in theory, within a six-year budget period, we could be paying for those. About how much money are we thinking about and should we put that into our assumptions?
Well, let's see. I don't, I don't know how to, how to guesstimate that.
Would not be a good time to talk about the public works service analysis?
Sure. I actually not seeing us getting to 25,000 in the next six years. I don't know. I could have gone, but that hasn't really...
We've gone, like you said, up 1,000 in the past year. The projections that I just saw put us at 22, 3.
Yeah.
And if that continues, 1,000 a year, we're there in three years, four years.
Could be.
You've got all these apartments coming online and if Lake Point goes in three years or so...
Yeah, so Lake Point's a whole different ballgame. So, yeah, obviously that would kick us over, but we'd have a ton of revenue to go with it too. But, yeah.
That's a good point. That's a good point.
So Chris, do you want to jump in?
It's a good time, it can wait till later.
Sure.
So since we brought up the signals as a segue into a project that we're just starting and it's something that Rob, Joanne, Jen, Richard, Surface Water Coordinator and I are working on, we're calling it a public works service analysis. So what we're doing is we're going to be hiring a team to help us evaluate how we do business. So in our surface water, roads, parks, maintenance world, we do business in quite a few different ways. We hire contractors directly, like 522. We have King County do work for us on bridges and signals and we also use Lake Forest Park, that contract we've had with Lake Forest Park a long time. And then Richard for the surface water program contracts separately for vectoring service. So we have a huge array of maintenance and inspection services that we provide and we do it a lot of different ways. We have varying control, we have varying costs. So in a nutshell, the study is going to be looking at how we do business and we're looking for efficiencies is one thing. Is there a way to combine things that, that we're doing? We'll be looking at the Lake Forest Park contract to see, it's been a long time since we've taken a hard, hard look at it to see, you know, what are we getting for what we pay? So it's time to take a hard look at that. And also, we're going to be looking at immediate things we could maybe do different, kind of a five-years-out and then a longer-term view. So it'll be a good time to have a conversation about what happens when the signals come online. If we know some parks are coming, what happens when those come online? So it's kind of a big-picture strategic look at what could we do different now to plan for the near future and then the longer, longer term. So that study is not going to be wrapped up and time to fold into the budget for the next biennium, but as soon as we have it wrapped up, we'll certainly talk to council about it. And part of that process, we'll be talking to staff and council about level of service because you can't decide what you need to do for maintenance unless we're all on the same page for level of service for maintenance. So that'll be a part of the conversation as well. And we actually interview consulting firms tomorrow. So it's, it's on its way. Did I forget anything?
I don't think so. I just, I have hopes that this, that this analysis will help us better anticipate these costs that are coming in the future, you know, a couple of years if we have, see a park coming. What are some, some benchmarks or tools that we can use to get a better handle on what those maintenance costs might be and how we can prepare for them?
I think it's just a good snapshot and look at where we are as a city, given our age and how we've developed. Like I tell my colleagues, we're not doing it because something's wrong, but I think there's an opportunity to reevaluate if we can find some efficiencies and save some money along the way would be great.
Any other questions at all on the, or any reactions, kind of preliminary thoughts when you think about what Joanne just presented in terms of trends or forecasts?
I actually like what Chris was just telling us right there. I thought that makes a lot of sense and not that, what you're telling me didn't, Joanne, but I, I think it's neat that we're going out trying to figure out. I mean, it reminds me of kind of the lean process, you know, where you're just, you're trying to figure out exactly what you're doing and how you can do it better or more efficiently or cost-effectively. So that's, can be nothing but a good thing.
Yeah, it, it all plays together.
Yeah, yep.
Anybody else? I'll just comment. At a high level, I figured one of the main things we need to do this year is to keep those lines from crossing in six years. The deficit isn't as bad as I thought it was going to be. So at least at the estimates right now, it doesn't look too bad.
Without going all these things over there.
But I mean, we've been seeing lines cross ever since high school. I mean, everybody's come on the council, those lines are always crossing out there. The thing is, they just keep doing what they do.
So can I, can I jump in?
And we make choices.
So the crossing of the lines, they don't just magically keep extending out. What, what's happened is we've made adjustments over the years. We've added a couple of new revenue sources, including transportation benefit district money, also franchise fee money.
I mean, we're charging, took the 1% like you're rating or whatever.
The 1% on property tax, yeah. On the expenditure side, we've done a few things like, for several years now, we've been funding overlays out of REIT. That was an adjustment we made. It used to be that the general fund used to fund overlays out of REIT. We're charging more of the city manager's office and finance departments to capital and to the street fund and there's various ways, little, what I call little rabbits that we've pulled out of a hat to try to help things along, but we're actually running out of tricks and those, we've used, we've used a lot of those little rabbits and like, if I reach in the, in the magic hat, I don't know if I'm going to find any more rabbits.
Rabbits multiply quickly.
So, so it could be that we could be bumping up against those crossing lines instead of keep moving them out because we've been really creative on how we shift and charge things. Another thing I want to point out is up until about 2011, 2010 or 2011, the general fund used to contribute generously to capital and the general fund's ability to generate, to contribute to capital has gone down over the years. We were able to take some surpluses and contribute, contribute to projects like the 522 project. We have about a quarter of a million of general fund money to the 522 project and we keep replenishing strategic ops with general fund, which then goes to capital. So kind of indirectly, we're funding capital with general fund, but lesson, like this forecast that Joanne has shows no contribution of the general fund to capital, which is kind of a bummer because I've talked to you in the past about this tug of war between operations and capital and over time, operations tends to crowd out capital and beat out capital and looks like operations is, is winning in this forecast. I don't want to be too bleak because we still have other sources to fund capital. We have impact fees and REIT mainly and also grants. So it's not like we're not going to be doing any capital, but it's just that the general fund's ability to fund capital is, is shown as zero in this forecast. Go ahead. Something I noticed was conspicuously missing in the places we could look for additional revenue would be taking a point or two of the bank capacity at some point. Just looking at where the lines cross and how close they are, my guess is if we were to take one point of bank, of bank capacity this fall going forward, that the lines would, wouldn't cross five or six years out because you're talking $30,000 and what is it, 45, $50,000?
About 45.
Yeah. So that's one tool that we're conspicuously ignoring as a, as something we can look into instead of keeping, trying to pull rabbits out of a hat.
Alan, go ahead.
The, Joanne is very conservative in her estimates of expenses and revenues and if she wasn't quite so conservative, she could make it so those lines didn't cross. Right?
Right.
So what we find is as, as, as she's conservative in underestimating revenue and overestimating expenses, as you keep going, each two years, we redo this and that cross goes farther out. And if she wasn't quite so conservative, we probably could get it so they would come and not cross.
But that's been our direction.
Within this time period, but eventually they probably would.
But that's been our direction to be conservative.
Sure.
Right.
So, but, but the point being...
We, we are...
The lines are a construct of your estimates, your conservative estimates.
Correct. That's why I need you to know what they are so that we're all being conservative together.
Yeah. But I remember years ago, comments being made, look the gloom and doom of these lines crossing out here and what are we going to do about it tomorrow to fix it?
Well, we've also been, you know, kind of blessed with low inflation lately. Otherwise, you know, my expenditure inflator would probably be higher. I mean, there, that has happened. There were those days. Right now, inflation is low and there's just a number of factors that are playing in our, in our favor. They won't always exist.
Yeah, and, and we've had really good revenues that have, I mean, you could say it's conservative, but you could also say it's been an incredible run in the economy. And like Rob was saying, you know, for the capital funds that we're relying a lot on REIT and impact fees and those are two things that easily could, could decrease significantly if we hit a downturn.
And to Deputy Mayor's point about the conservative budgeting, to reiterate, Joanne's assuming a kind of a local recession in her forecast. She shows sales tax dropping by 10% and development fees, permit fees dropping by 30%. So she is being conservative. There's one more thing I wanted to mention that isn't in our assumptions on the expenditure side. So we've talked about new parks coming online not being in our assumptions, but another thing has to do with pavement, pavement maintenance. And so right now, the money we've been spending on pavement maintenance, on overlays, has been on our arterials. But we also need to be thinking about our residential roads and what is our plan for extending the life of the pavement on our residential roads? And right now, at the current rate we're spending, we're only taking care of our arterial roads. So we need to think about extending the life of the residential roads through a combination of overlays, chip seals, slurry seals. And so that's another thing that Chris and our team are going to be looking at is how do we get on a cycle of treating all of our payment, not just the arterials?
Along those lines. Oh, I'm sorry, you're...
Go ahead. I just want to say, the lines don't magically move out, okay? We have enough information that we can make wise choices and we can either increase revenue or decrease spending. So I didn't mean to imply that it always would behave this way. If we closed our eyes and didn't do anything, they would not keep moving out. We'd be in trouble. So we get enough information, we make decisions every two years and some decisions in between. So that's why it keeps changing amongst the other things that people have mentioned. Alan, did you want to?
My comment was on the, on the roads and the, and the resurfacing residential roads. When construction or other utilities are tearing up roads to change pipes and so on, they patch it. Is it their job to get it back to nice new blacktop again? Like down on 73rd, for example?
Yes, they will be overlaying that road.
Okay, that's not our, that's not our nickel.
That's, yeah, nuds.
Okay.
And I know there's a bunch of utility work, I believe, in Deb's neighborhood and that's going to be getting overlaid as well. So in our road standards, we talk about what kind of cuts in the roadway result in what type of overlay. Usually, when you see cuts all the way across the road, you're getting full width overlay.
Okay. So Councilmember Smith and then the mayor want to make comments and then let's see where we are and maybe we'll be able to move on.
Okay. I have a question regarding the roads and, and, and the rating that we have, which was a good rating. So whatever information is provided for our budget discussions, will that have what it will take to maintain the current rating we have or what, what kind of information will we be provided to make the decision to make sure our roads aren't deteriorated at a higher rate than they're being repaired?
What I've talked to Chris about is creating a plan that shows us on a cycle, taking care of all of our roads and making sure that each road gets some sort of a treatment on a schedule, whether it's every 10 years or whatever. So that's the plan that we need to come up with.
Okay, that's, that sounds good. And I mean, it is, it is concerning if we aren't doing what we need to do when the revenues are good because it's not going to be easier when the revenues are not so good.
Yes, ma'am.
I certainly want to see that maintained as best we can. And I think whatever we need to do as far as providing funds to make sure that happens, we've always tried to keep the road maintenance up, because it's been very, very important to this council as a whole.
It's easy for cities to kind of forget about the pavement condition of the residential roads. Some of these older cities like Tacoma, Seattle, some of those residential neighborhoods, it's called traffic calming by potholes. And, yeah, but those are the older cities that are 30, 50 years ahead of us, and we just don't want to fall into that same pattern.
I'm a Seattle resident, I've experienced that. Should we go on? We have, dessert is behind me, but I thought, since we've asked you these questions before, but we wanted to give you the benefit of hearing from each other, that we could just reiterate some of the questions from the interviews about global and national regional issues. You are predicting would impact Kenmore. And I don't think we need to take 25 minutes on this. So with the motivation of dessert, I think we could go through this rather quickly and probably take only about 10 to 15 minutes. By the way, too, when I had the privilege of talking to the leadership team in preparation for this retreat, they had a lot of interesting answers to this question, too. So first, looking just at global issues and events that you think could have an impact on Kenmore. And Councilmember Curtis, when we interviewed you, you had quite a few different ideas. And I was wondering, do you have your notes in front of you, or do you want to kick this off from a global standpoint?
I think really hard, and I write them on three-by-five cards, and then when I'm done, I throw the three-by-five cards away. Do you have a clue what I said back then?
Actually, this is a memory test.
Yeah, the dementia part, I guess. I think I remember something about my concern of ongoing migration from the Mideast to Europe, destabilizing general economies. Can't remember the other high-level global things.
Immigration and the economy, some of your thoughts about the future.
So my immigration thoughts is, America is mostly a land of immigrants, other than the Native Americans. And it's probably how we're going to fund all of our retirements, by keep bringing new people in and having them all work and pay taxes. So I think immigrants are good, as long as there's some control of who's coming in and they're legal.
And then you mentioned China.
What's that?
Remember, you mentioned China and some of the things going on there and the competition between the US and China?
Just general competition. I mean, they're a big, you know, expanding into the China Sea and other areas. They're not acting like somebody who will just kind of be quiet and stay over there. I suspect we'll be having some kind of challenges with them, economic or otherwise, over the years.
Yeah, funding our retirement and scrap the cap.
Pardon me?
Scrap the cap on funding our retirement. Yeah, I think certainly global economy certainly is going to, can trickle down and affect us. Certainly, some of the recessions that we're seeing are certainly affecting us and our ability to trade. As the dollar becomes stronger, it becomes harder and harder for other countries to buy our stuff. Deficits continue to arise and puts us in serious trouble. So I'm certainly concerned about another depression, another fall in the stock market, another fall in the real estate market, because we've seen some pretty good increases here recently that I don't know if they're sustainable.
Any other global? Ellen?
Yeah, the economy and the terrorism that's been going on. And I think back, you know, if it becomes more of a problem, a more frequent problem than it has been, and it's been too frequent in the last couple of years, think back to when they had the snipers in DC. It just shut down the economy of that whole area. Everybody hunkered down, stayed home. And if everybody's living in fear of a terrorist attack, and it could come that way, it could have really devastating effects on everybody.
Anybody else?
Should we go into like what you are thinking about in terms of some of the national issues, events, trends that you think could have an impact on Kenmore?
I do remember one of my comments on the national scene. I think our federal government will continue to be ineffective, no matter who the president is, even though there are worse choices than bad choices. But I think the Congress will just not be effective and able to really lead very well. I think that's going to push more work to the local level, and I think Kenmore particularly is doing better than a lot of the cities around us. I think we have a good leadership team, both the council and the staff support. So I think we're making good decisions that we'll be able to, you know, ride through difficult times as good as anybody. Hard times are hard, but I think we're pretty prepared.
Anything else on a national level?
I seem to always get this mic. I think at the national level, one of the biggest issues we're dealing with, and I think it's just going to get worse over the next couple of years, especially if we have another recession or depression, is the issue of income inequality and the discontent that that kind of foments. I think we saw a bit of that in this primary election, and I think we'll continue to see it. We see the, I just read a story last week showing CEO salaries going up even higher and faster than staff salaries are. And we're going to continue seeing this gap between the haves and the have-nots, and that's going to affect a lot of our residents here and throughout the region, and it's going to bleed into things like housing affordability. It's going to feed into homelessness and a lot of other issues that we're going to have to tackle, so.
Look, just what's happened this past weekend, I mean, the stories in the paper shows rents going up $1,000 a month, increases around here. It's, yeah, we're heading for...
So that's actually one of the things I had mentioned when I met with Jim was about, I see the housing issue as being probably one of the bigger challenges that we're kind of, you know, it trickles into us whether we want to or not. And it was interesting, I was at a house up in, over on the other side of 228th about two weeks ago, and I was talking to the guy, and he was married and has a couple of kids, and he went to Inglemore. And so we started chatting, and he goes, oh, yeah, we wanted to buy a house in Kenmore, we just couldn't afford it. And it was just, you know, first of all, you love to hear when somebody wants to be here. That was nice, but it was unfortunate, you know, just having the conversation with him and learning about it. But, you know, this is something that I think we're just going to, by our location, it's only going to become a bigger issue as the region is growing. We just will kind of become more engulfed into this Seattle, Bellevue region, and I don't see it going away at all. And I don't exactly know what we have to do policy-wise yet, but I do think it is probably one of our bigger challenges to maintain, you know, a level of diversity in our community.
Ellen, go ahead.
This is a glass-full, half-empty kind of thing. I was at an Economic Development Council board meeting a couple, three months ago, and there were three developers on a panel that were building big, big stuff downtown. And they were asked about the future and what they thought was coming. And they, all of them, indicated that with the increase in the jobs downtown, the congestion downtown, the housing costs downtown, the office space costs downtown, that they foresaw future development coming out to the suburbs. And so that might be a plus for us. And we have a big development coming in Lake Point, and it sure would be nice to be able to fill it. And because of the congestion and the high costs of the urban centers, it may help us.
Since Bryn took us there, anything else on kind of a regional or even local level, you'd say, are real big issues that are going to be affecting the city?
Yeah, I would say with the possibility of Sound Transit 3 coming through and building the bus wrapper transit that we asked for along 522, that we have some real opportunities at the local level to really increase access to those stations and make them really usable for folks, and make them as accessible as possible, so that folks can get there without, you know, once the parking lots fill up, people are still able to walk or bike or get there, however. I think there's a lot of good synergy, though, around those projects coming online in four or five years, assuming that the ballot measure passes.
But I think also some of the work that we've done with the transit-oriented development overlays that we've put, I certainly think is also laying foundation for some good, sustainable growth here. So, I mean, I'm certainly encouraged by that, but it's as long as the economy can stay moving forward that will allow this development to happen. So, I mean, I think we've done the right things in trying to put the regulations into place that are necessary to allow this stuff to happen if developers want to do it. The question is, is the funding going to continue to be there so developers can do it?
Anybody else?
If council doesn't, I have a few things. So with the economy the way it is, we are experiencing stiffer competition for good talent, and we're having more employee turnover lately than we have in the past. So especially on the permits side of the shop, and that also includes engineering. So maintaining a good compensation system for our employees to make sure we maintain or retain our good talent, I think is going to be an issue. Also, along the lines of what Councilmember Herbig said, and Chris is the one who brought this to my attention, and that is, with ST3 and the big ballot measure that passed in Seattle transportation, and with the state transportation funding package that's funded, there's going to be billions of dollars of work being done here in the region, and that's going to drive engineering and design costs up, it's going to drive construction costs up. We are already seeing construction costs going up, and we're constantly updating and adjusting upwards our cost estimate on our capital projects. That was one of the problems I was having with the town green. Every month that went by in design, my construction costs were going up. So that's something that we need to be cognizant of. Let me see here. Well, if somebody else wanted to jump in, I can come back.
Thank you. Well, just to kind of tag on what Rob was saying about the construction costs, you know, it wasn't that long ago that we faced an environment like this. And what I was thinking about was, you know, the big one that's coming up is the bridge. And so that's going to be really important, because you can't, you know, build half a bridge. I mean, I guess we kind of are, but, you know. But, you know, so that's going to be a really important thing for us as council members to, you know, be able to continue to fund the projects. Because, you know, like you were saying with the one project, the town green, how it kept going up. And so, you know, chasing the dollars to try to keep it funded is really important.
Yeah.
But good, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Got a few more things. So one thing that's going on with technology and all the changes there and creating that sharing economy that we're seeing, and how things like Airbnb are going to affect Kenmore. And I just have a hard time just keeping up with just what's going on on my little smartphone. And so technology is, and the race to keep up with it is going to continue to be an issue. Also, civil rights improvements, this is more national than regional, but we're seeing improvements in civil rights, especially as it pertains to the LGBT community, and staying current with all those things. And, let's see, what else? Oh, this is kind of regional, but this is the importance of maintaining our relationships with King County, our next-door cities, the leadership in those next-door cities and how that can change and fluctuate, and staying on top of all that. By the way, these notes I'm going over are from my department head, so I need to give credit where credit is due. And this concept of, I think this is Nancy Ausley's, but this first-ring suburb demand, we are a first-ring suburb, and I think there's going to be more pressure for us to be providing urban services and urbanizing. And as we urbanize, things like the cement plant and the asphalt plant, how relevant are those as the more we urbanize? And the expected services that we're going to have to provide? What's that?
You mentioned the cement and asphalt and urbanizing.
Yeah, what I mean by that is, 70 years ago, when there was nothing out here, it was probably a great location.
Oh, I got you.
But now that you got more and more residences and businesses forming around them, it's, And then just, is there a multifamily housing bubble? Is there a single-family housing bubble? And then this gets back to the affordable housing thing. It just, I fear for my kids, because the price of homes right now is going up faster than income, and that's not sustainable, and that has to correct itself eventually, so.
Councilmember Herbig?
Rob, one quick question, actually. I was thinking about national issues, and there was just the recent executive order about overtime pay. Does that, how does that affect the city?
I saw it briefly, but I can't remember what it, specifically what it said.
They moved up what the maximum salary was for exempt.
I remember that.
To like $47,000 or something, and then made everybody else under that able to, well, subject to overtime laws. And has there been any thought on how that's going to affect our salaries?
Yeah, when I saw that story, my first analysis was, I don't think this is going to affect us. But let me check with Joanne and get back to you on that.
Okay, thanks.
Other two questions on this agenda, I'm just going to do something a little bit, maybe to jumpstart this conversation a bit more. We had asked you in the interviews, what do you see as, what could the city do as an organization to help prepare the community for the challenges that you identified, and also for the opportunities? And I realized that here on the agenda in the next section, I had tried to summarize what I thought were kind of common themes or interests of all seven of you. And in some respects, these are the answers you gave to those two questions. Because you talked to Rob and me about making sure that the city is financially sustainable, maintaining a focus and momentum on a few big, important things, maintaining the quality of life here in the community, in a sea of constant change, and three of you used that phrase or something very similar, and then making incremental changes and progress to achieve the longer-term vision and goals. So I'm kind of interested, does this strike you as kind of the common interests of all seven of you? And in some respects, is that the answer to the questions about what does the city do as an organization to prepare the community for both the coming challenges and coming opportunities?
Things I don't, you sort of touched on it on the financial side, but, and it was one of the things I think we can do, and a lot of it has to do with knowing where we are sort of in the cycle of the business economic cycle, but also knowing Lake Point will require, we don't know what it'll require. And it was to maintain some level of financial taxing capacity, rather than, you know, Rob talked about, he's pulled all his rabbits out of his hat and everything, and there's something to that, both on both sides, both on the revenue and the expenditure side. And what I don't want to see us do is tap out everything we can from a revenue side. I'd like to, you just never know what you don't know. I'd like to, you just never know what you don't know, and I'd like to have some level of preparation there.
Anybody else? Is that a sign that we should take a five-minute break or so and get dessert? But I, Brent, I was going to say, I think that was a common theme I've heard from many of you in the interviews, and just make it real broad or open-ended. What do you see as the 2017, 18 budget priorities for the council? What priorities do you think would be able to achieve the vision, the goals that you've talked about this evening?
I guess mine isn't a specific item, it's more of a philosophy. I think it's easy to say yes to every good project that comes along, but there's some really huge unknowns. You know, how much that bridge is actually going to cost when we get around to building it, the cost of construction, other things that, how much are we going to have to chip into Lake Point to make that thing go in terms of infrastructure? We could be talking, you know, 10 mil, tens of millions of dollars between all those unknowns. So, for me, it's priority, get things done that need to be done, make sure we have enough money to maintain those things. So as we build parks, make sure we've got the money built in. And if we need to delay some other things or not start them or, or say no, I think that needs to be okay. So it just makes me a little nervous when, when we, you know, every good project that different people come up with, we, I think, say yes maybe too often.
And things may not happen as quick as we'd like them to, but, you know, I think we just have to be patient and continue to move forward like we have been, to live within our means. I certainly want to see our road maintenance continue to be funded. And if we need to increase funding to, to, to keep it at a sustainable level, then I'm all in favor of doing that because it's certainly much cheaper to maintain our roads than it is to rebuild them.
Go ahead, Steve.
So, making sure what Councilmember Curtis said on maintaining, have the funds to maintain our things, make sure that we have the funds for employees as well, as salaries go up and we need to remain competitive, and that we have enough savings for any type of recession we might predict. And then one just other thought is, you know, since we're now that first tier of a suburb, you know, where we kind of want to go, what we want to look at as a city, do we want all of a sudden, you know, big tall buildings, or are we wanting to be more Kirkland, small townish, you know, maybe look at that at some point, see what we want.
Go ahead, Councilmember Sperry.
Well, I think our, our, our general pattern that we've established of, you know, focusing on, on key, key budget items and not, you know, continuing to make the incremental improvements that we're, we're now getting to see visibly, I think that's been a good strategy. I think what's different about this year is a lot of the maintenance is coming due for these things, and we need to anticipate that. So that's a new budget item that we're looking at. And I've always wondered why budget, you know, parks budgets and all that, the maintenance, it seems to not happen in other levels of government. And you can see why. It's a lot easier to build them than it is to maintain them. And so I think that's going to be an interesting challenge for us as we move forward. On the other side, one of the things that I think we have as a, a real advantage as a city is, you know, a lot of the way we've really increased, been able to have more resources to do things is growth, and we still have a tremendous upside. We've obviously mentioned the Lake Point project, you know, several times here, and that, that's huge. But there's also a lot of other opportunities that we have, just we're seeing, you know, the new development that's happening, so.
So, so far there is a big theme among you about maintenance, and your, a couple of you are talking about really prioritizing incremental improvement, as Laurie just said, really thinking about maintenance, this kind of is a big new challenge, and then the growth and development, which I think we heard too when we were interviewing you.
I'd maybe add, I still, you know, have a vision for 181st being a place people come down and walk, and there's a reason to, and places to shop and places to hang out. And we just need to protect that. So if somebody has this great idea for something that's totally incompatible with that vision, I think we need to, you know, as long as it's with our ability zoning-wise to say no, we need to say no, and, and stay really true to what we're trying to build here in our downtown. Because it isn't going to happen really anywhere else in, in, in Kenmore, I don't think. So we need to protect this, this street.
Other things, whether they're specific or a little bit more kind of philosophical or general guidelines, because I thought that was helpful too.
On the specific side, I, I would say, and it kind of gets into what Milton was just talking about, and that's the downtown core and parking, I think will continue to be a, and a growing problem. And I know that part of that maybe is just part of the TOD and the, the way we kind of design where we want our growth and our density to be. But I do think, as a specific issue, it's something that we might want to continue to think about how we're going to deal with it. Because it is a point, if we want people to come into downtown, not everybody can walk, not everybody can easily get here, especially because of the way our city's laid out and the geography and, and the hills and whatnot. And so, it's going, it's a challenge to maintain some level of accommodation for people that come by car.
You ready to go again?
No, I'm, I'm done.
He just took another bite of that cupcake, so that was my cue. The, you know, I think we have so many good projects that we've talked about that are either in planning or are funded or partially funded or, or on our horizon, that it, it's really hard for me, other than Lake Point, to really grasp any other big project that I feel like rises to any high level of we have to. The only thing that's probably close is I would really like to see us get Twin Springs open at some point. But other than that, it's, it is a lot more just incremental doing things. I don't, I just don't see, there's, Rob's and staff has been, have been very effective of getting us to where we want to go on some of these things. And, and when you look at the long-term plan in these projects, they're significant and, and they're, they're costly. And so it, it would be reasonable to think, well, you know, there is probably a little bit of a lull in the scale and scope of some of the capital projects, once we get through the bridge and we get through some of these park improvements and different things. These are big things.
So, and Brent, when you just said that there's a lot of projects in the pipeline, and then just your last phrase, so are you talking about things, I think I heard some of you mentioned like Town Green, the walkways and waterways, especially since that's about to be a bond issue, even the ball fields? And those were some of the kind of more specific things I thought I heard you all mention before?
Yeah, these are all things.
Those are projects in the pipeline?
Right. I look at those as, we've discussed them, we all appear to be somewhat relatively on the same page that we want to see these things move forward. And so there's a point here, these are, these are costly. And they're costly both from zapping capital funds, but also from an M and O perspective. And so, I, I don't, I think my appetite is diminishing for huge, large-scale projects because I think we, I don't know that we'll have the capacity to, you know, engage in them.
So, since we're dealing with, with this biennial budget, and we're talking about the potential of ball fields coming online, or, or at least getting under construction in the next two years, do, do we need to provide a funding mechanism for those in, that is independent of the walkways and waterways?
For construction?
Yep.
Yes.
And this budget cycle would be the time to narrow that down and provide a mechanism.
Yep. And I have some ideas along, along those lines.
Good. And you will be sharing them at the appropriate time, right? I'm not asking now. I'm not asking now.
Related to the ball fields question, though, are we going to have, do you think that we will have a lease figured out before we get to budget season?
Well, great question. So, source of frustration and stress for me, but the plan right now is, so, so State Parks Commission wants to do SEPA on the ball field lease before they agree to a lease. So we've gotten started on that. After several months of negotiations, I'm proud to announce that we have a SEPA lead agency agreement after several months of negotiations. So, now we need to, and now we're in the process of getting the SEPA checklist out for the ball fields, and we expect public comment on that to happen in August. And that's a 21-day period, so by the end of August, we'll have public comments. And then, most likely, an MDNS mitigated determination of, of non-significance will be issued. And then once that's issued and we've gotten the public comments, then we'll be able to take it to the Parks Commission for approval, and we expect to do that at the November meeting. So it'll be right about the same time you'll be adopting your budget, if that all goes well. So.
To that, will we also know for sure that North Shore School District will be taking care of the reimbursement on the maintenance for what is happening at Morelands by then?
Oh, that'd be a good goal. Thank you, yeah. We have, we have started discussions with the school district on that, and they understand where we're coming from. They, let's see, well, I can't. So, one of the issues that we need to figure out with them is parking, because we're going to have a lot of parking demand there, and our tiny little parking lot that we own there is not going to be enough. And there's no on-street parking around there. And so, working out a deal where we get to use their parking is something that we're going to be talking about.
Would the church also? Because they have an agreement with the school district, and since our hours for most park users would be off-school hours, that would seem like, that might be a natural to have a conversation about.
Yeah, definitely a thought of that. I'm, I'm assuming the church would want income and, you know, rent, whereas with the school district, maybe we can negotiate some sort of an in-kind exchange without paying rent.
Go ahead, Laurie.
So, one of the other things that's different about this budget process is having a ballot measure that we won't know whether or not it passes or doesn't pass until basically November, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So is there, I mean, I know a lot of it won't affect right away, this particular budget, but is there, has anybody thought about, you know, how to, to kind of have both sides of it in terms of what if? I mean, are there adjustments we need to make one way or the other, depending on whether or not it passes?
Yeah, we've talked about that, and there's been times in my career where we've actually prepared two budgets. Like, in 1999, I think, when I-695 was on the ballot, we actually prepared two budgets that year, a budget if it passes and a budget if it fails. The one if it passed was way more bleak than the one that was, that failed. So we've kind of tossed around that idea too, but I don't think we'll need to because the maintenance dollars won't come online in this bud, in this biennium. And it'll be pretty easy to come back and amend the CIP if the ballot measure passes. That was kind of our thought, wasn't it?
Okay. Thank you.
I would just add to that, probably the factor that will most significantly come into play would be staffing in the biennium to, to gear up for those projects. So there might be some staffing considerations. I don't, I don't know what they are yet, but that is an area we need to look at for.
Can, can I ask a question on that? So it, does the, are the dollars raised though in the bond, if it passed, there's dollars, I assume, that would go towards the staffing to implement the projects? Okay. So, so it shouldn't be necessarily a net?
Right. And I'm not trying to say that, that it is, but, but just staffing in general be a consideration. But all the costs of the bond, whether it's consultants, design teams, planners, park planners, transportation planners, can be funded as part of that project.
Okay. Thanks.
So this is probably going to be wrong, but I'll just label it as, these are the budget priorities for the coming biennium that I'm hearing you say so far. And then just to prompt the conversation a little bit further, savings and reserve, maintenance, the bond, which is walkways and waterways, ball fields, Lake Point, and even the idea of continuing to fairly or fairly compensate employees so that they stay. So that's just kind of a rough list, and I'm just asking for your comments on that, or deletions or additions or whatever. Councilmember Herbert?
If I heard Joanne earlier, I seem to remember that our fund balances were, were pretty healthy, almost too healthy. And so I'm not sure if building those up is really one of our priorities going forward. I mean, I, I could be wrong on that, but I personally don't see a, a big benefit for us just sitting on a bunch of cash for the next few years.
Well, I'll kind of add my, my take on that. The, the goal isn't to have more and more fund balance, and, but at the same time, we have to match our ongoing expenses with ongoing revenue. And so I'm not adverse to doing like we have done where we take out, you know, on one-time, one-time excess balances or excess reserves to fund one-time items. So it's a little different situation, because you don't want to obviously fund ongoing expenses with one-time withdrawals, so.
Yeah, I think we're generally in agreement there.
I mean, I'm sorry, if I had read the sentences completely the way they were spoken, I think one of the sentences was to make sure you have sufficient dollars to maintain. And also the other specific phrase that was used was just maintaining savings and reserve. So I didn't hear anyone say, you know, to do a lot more to build it up, but just necessarily maintain it.
I mean, in the past, we have, we have allowed fund balances to build up so we can pay for something. For instance, with the City Hall, we allowed that, that fund balance to build up so that For instance, with the City Hall, we allowed that, that fund balance to build up so that we could build City Hall and pay cash for it. So there's been other things that we've done that with too, and I think that has held us in good stead in the past, so I'm not one for giving that up.
What was that last part, you're not for giving what up?
The fund balances, to allow us to pay cash for things. To allow us to have the bank capacity, to, I mean, allow us to have money there to, for matching funds when the occasion arises for different grant, funding opportunities.
But using one-time, one-time funds for one-time purposes rather than ongoing purposes, I think that's what Lori was indicating. You can't use that fund balance and just gradually deplete a fund balance for ongoing expenses, because you run out of fund balance eventually.
I have a question and it, maybe it's not quite, this isn't quite the right place, but I, I know we've been talking a lot about affordable housing and what the city can do. And I believe there will be something, I, well, I can't remember what the next step is right now in our discussions on it, but I would absolutely be very interested in trying to create, or not necessarily even create anything new, but to commit a certain, kind of like what we, what Rob had presented for the human, human resources, or not human services. Thank you. I think it was five...
Seven fifty-three.
Seven fifty, okay. You know it right off the top of your head, exactly. So that was a good, that was a measure that was, it's consistent. We can at least look at it, we can see how it relates to our peers. It would be nice to have something sort of like that, maybe that we could understand how we could, or maybe it's not even separated, maybe it's part of that, but it seems like it's going to be a bigger and bigger issue going forward. It would be nice to have some measure to look at and say, this is a reasonable amount and it would grow at a reasonable level. Like, you know, I'm not at all suggesting this is what it should be, but this would be, one example would be is if you said, if we've got four and a half million that we know are, is our take from property taxes, it would be easy to say, okay, 1% of that's 45,000, that we could set a policy and say, or a goal of 1% or 2%, or, it could be something like that where we know that there's a source that will likely be growing and then it can be easily predictable and it's, it allows us to know we're kind of doing our part to at least maintaining something as a consistent council priority.
So you're saying, for example, you could tap into banked capacity and say...
It could be banked capacity, it could be, or it could be existing capacity, because it's already in our existing budget. I'm trying to tie it to something so that it allows some level of predictability and growth as well, so that we know, and as a body, obviously anything can be changed, we can decide to do whatever we want. But I think it would be nice just to know what our commitment is and to look at it more almost as a commitment and say, this is what, as a city, we've, we've decided to do and, and it, you know.
Just, you're talking about our commitment to Arch.
Yes. And so I guess that's the phase two of it. The first commitment is trying to understand, how much do we want to go to that issue? And then the second phase of it is, is Arch where it should go? And I'm assuming yes, because I think it's probably the most effective and efficient use of the resource, but I don't even know that for sure.
We don't, I don't think we really have any other way of funding affordable housing other than Arch.
Yes, we do. We spent $50,000 per unit, as I remember, to fund the five affordable units over at Main Street. So we, we did it.
We did it by discounting the purchase price.
Right.
Yeah, but we owned it. We don't own these private properties that will be developed. So unless we're going to, and I think it's highly unfair to tap into those property owners and say, this is now your burden to carry. We've given them incentives that they can do certain things, but I think as a city, separate from that incentive side, if we're going to have a separate dollar amount, it would be nice, nice to have. And if not, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, maybe, maybe Arch, that isn't something that is that high of a priority. To me, I believe we need to do something on a consistent basis, but I don't necessarily know what it is. I'm just trying to look at a way that we can kind of take the, a little bit more of the discussion out of it and make it more of a predictable, ongoing process.
But the thing with Arch is Arch gives us a leverage for our funds, right?
Yes, yep.
For our little funds will bring back millions to build a private here.
Right. And even if it's not here all the time, I mean, I actually don't, just knowing it's being put to that, that cause and I think it has benefit to all of us.
Anything else on this or other budget priorities? Either ones that we've talked about a little bit or that you want to put on the list?
I think when you were giving your summary, you didn't specifically mention anything about continuing to support 181st as a walkable downtown.
Well, actually, I was thinking to myself, there's three or four things I left out and I don't know, but they do fit under these headings. So even looking at whether you want to be as a first-tier suburb, suburb of tall buildings versus kind of keeping that small-town feel, 181st as a place where people can walk and hang out to talk about downtown core and really looking at, is there even a way we can maintain a level of accommodation for cars? So there was a couple of the really interesting ideas too that I did kind of gloss over. We could just put that on a rough list for you. One of the things I'm just thinking as I sit here is, I should go home and type this up for you tomorrow and send it to Rob so that we could, you know, bring it to you. Kind of type tomorrow's a very rough draft list, because our goal tomorrow night is to have you solidify your agreement on budget priorities, so. So I'm not really trying to get you to finish up tonight, I just think it's best to get some of these ideas out on the table.
Can I jump in? So on the, on the, on the whiteboard in my office is a list of things I call big deals. And I think you've all seen that list. So Lake Point and regional transportation, those kind of go hand in hand. ST3, St. Edward State Park and the two big things going on there, walkways and waterways, ped bike safety and downtown redevelopment, whether it's the 181st work we're doing or the ripple effect from Kenmore Village or the town green itself. Anyway, I was showing this list to a retired city manager the other day and he goes, and I was explaining what they were and he goes, whoa, any one of those things would be a full-time job, would be the one big thing you, you know. And so, anyway, I think that these big deals are worth mentioning and keeping at the forefront.
Yeah, I would agree and I think we kind of, that was captured in some of this about just focusing on the, the big deals we're already doing, which, you know, and I appreciate you reading the list, because that's the problem is, you know, we forget what we're already doing and then we think, oh yeah, we want this and we want that, so it's a good reminder.
I think it gets at your comment about what's in the pipeline already is pretty big, so. Councilor Herbert.
And I'm going to sound like a broken record, but I, I always think it's important that we continue the relentless incrementalism with regards to our multimodal mobility, vulnerable user mobility sidewalks. Even if things don't go our way in November, I still think we need to be really aggressive going after, you know, funding matches for grants and filling in sidewalk gaps as we go forward, because it's just going to get more expensive as we go and we're going to have more people trying to move around. And if we're forcing them all into cars, that's going to create more backup for everybody and that will lead to cranky people calling City Hall and yelling at us on Facebook, so. I'd like to give people as many options as possible to get around.
Anything else or is this pretty, I'm kind of thinking to myself, maybe this is getting to the point where we can stop this evening, because you've kind of come up with a good list. And again, I'll type this up and give it to Rob and so we can have it printed out and ready for you tomorrow. But anything else? I mean, to stop the conversation. Okay. Well, so as I just said, tomorrow, our goal would be to solidify your agreement on a few, I guess I'll just reiterate that phrase, big deals as budget priorities for 2017 and 18. Talk a little bit about what are the outcomes, specific outcomes that you would like to see for each one of those? Again, it's kind of a little bit of a brainstorm, but you know these things well too, so just be able to identify a couple of outcomes that the council is looking for so that as Rob and Joanne and the others develop the budget, they have that in mind. So those are the two big goals for tomorrow night, so. But what did you think of tonight? What are you taking away from this evening's discussion? Anything?
I think it's good to review and, and just think back over what we have accomplished, where we are and where we've got to go and, and to plan ahead. I think it's productive. And you can't do that in a regular meeting and you can't do that on one-on-ones, it's got to be a group discussion like this and I think it's worthwhile.
Go ahead. To me, it just feels like it confirms we're on a good track and as a council and as a staff, we're working good as a team and, you know, changes will come and we need to adapt. That's how it goes.
I thought it was really great to read through, I mean, this is a lot to go through, but it was great going through there and seeing the things we were talking about two years ago and seeing some of those getting checked off and seeing how we keep moving forward on a lot of the things that are important for, for the citizens of Kenmore. I also love that right now we are keeping our tradition of ending retreat meetings early alive. I think that's a great tradition that we need to uphold going forward.
I didn't know that was a tradition, thank God, I would have been under so much pressure. Any other? Okay, I guess we're, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm not trying to break the tradition that we're trying to start about leaving early. One thing that would help me is if there's any specific questions from our city manager or staff that you want us to answer, any specific, you know, anything we need to be prepared, that might be helpful if we had...
For tomorrow?
Yeah. I mean, I know this is just the beginning, but if there's something that we're not getting to, that we need to think about, that would be helpful.
Yeah, just giving good thoughts, the questions that we have for you tomorrow on tomorrow's agenda, I think would be really helpful. Can I, one thing I probably should have mentioned during an earlier part of this evening is Development Services is in a constant struggle, Brian's department, because they're having turnover issues, they're, they have temporary positions that also increase that turnover. We're seeing slippage in our turnaround times for permits, as you might have seen in your packets. And so Brian is constantly on my case for wanting to provide good quality customer service at the front desk and staffing it appropriately. And so Brian, do you want to talk a little bit about that and what your life is like and the life of your coworkers?
I won't go into that much detail, but like Rob mentioned, we are seeing turnover in our department and, you know, we took a, we took a different approach a few years back on a couple of different fronts. One was, you know, to bring all the services in-house. Two was to kind of rearrange. Three was to tackle code enforcement a little bit differently than we previously have. And so we've done some shifting with the, the staff and it kind of created some, for example, like in the code enforcement position, we had it halftime, code enforcement halftime, building inspector. And we've recruited twice for that position. It's a very difficult position to find somebody that's qualified to be able to do both of those and then also be able to retain them on, you know, if they're a good employee, which we, we do get a lot of good employees, a lot of the other cities will, you know, snag them up and take them from us. And what we're seeing is, on the permit specialist side too, is we're almost becoming a training facility for these bigger cities. And so we're taking the time and resources to train them, invest in them, and then they're leaving to go to bigger cities. And what I'm really hearing is, is the compensation, there's mainly the main reason that we're losing people today. And, you know, I know a lot of times in the past, we've considered ourselves smaller and we compared ourselves to different cities in the region, but like we were talking about all of tonight and all the changes that we're going through as a city, and it really has to do with our proximity, our location in the region and, you know, and how Kirkland and Bellevue's and stuff affect us. It's important that when and if we ever do salary and studies that we, we think of, you know, think of that, and if we want to be able to compete with these bigger cities in the future and retain these really good people, we have that kind of mindset too. Another thing to point out is, you know, over the last four years, development has been increasing, steadily increasing over that time, and we've continued to have the same amount of resources in our department. And like Rob said, we are seeing a level of services slip because of that. You know, currently we have four and a half full-time employees in Development Services, whereas, you know, it could easily function way better with, you know, two and a half more employees, let's just say like seven employees, full-time employees or regular employees. The permit specialist position is a temporary position and it's limited to two years from now. And so we're backfilling that position now because a recent person has moved on, but if, you know, if it continues to be in a temporary arrangement, we're going to be struggling with this, you know, every period when this is up.
Yeah, and I'm still gun-shy from the last recession. That was a, I was in a city with pretty elastic revenues and it was a nightmare to go through and I don't want to live it again. And so having these limited-term positions has been kind of a defense against staffing up too much and then having to lay people off when the recession comes. But that comes with a cost, so I'm still struggling with it. I somewhat tongue-in-cheek say that the moment I recommend to make these positions permanent and then we make them permanent, there'll be a recession. And so the only thing standing between us and a recession is me making these positions permanent. So, yeah, go ahead.
As we market the city, one of the key messages we have is the customer service when you, when you come up to the permit counter. And we have a new general brochure that's at the printer right now and prominently on that, on that brochure is a quote from the, from the contractor who built Kenmore Air's new hangar. And, and we were at the dedication ceremony a year, year and a half ago and I was talking with someone from Kenmore Air Maintenance and this fellow was there and he said, do you work for the city? And I thought, how should I answer that? But he, he said, I have, I've built projects all over the West Coast and this is the best experience I've ever had with the city permit department. And so we asked him for a quote for the brochure. And so that's, you know, that's, what Brian says is, is important from just how we operate as a, as a city, but the dividends that it pays us down the road with people in the industry talking to each other and saying like, wow, Kenmore is awesome. I mean, that, that pays off for us in so many different ways. So just wanted to offer that observation.
Can I say something that goes along with that? It gives you the reputation that you're efficient and, and helpful in the permitting process, but the message is even greater than that. It's, we want you here. How can we help you be successful in Kenmore? In contrast to some cities that give the impression that they're doing everything they can to keep you out. And so whatever we do at that front counter there is really important as to how businesses and people, residents as well, are welcomed in the city.
Councilor's curious.
I would just comment, you know, in agreement to that. I would just comment, you know, in agreement to that, that your staff is one of the most important resources we have, as important probably as the money that we have. I know in my line of work, if I lose a physician, it costs me $250,000 to replace them. You lose patients, you, the patients that you do keep have to switch to other providers, which is just chaos for patients. I hate to create chaos for my patients. So it's easy to say, "oh, you know, we saved $10,000 bucks," but if you switch over and over in that training time that goes into that, it's just a waste, waste of money. You do not get it back. If you have a position that's turning over repeatedly, there's something wrong with what we're doing, and I would say you should fix that. You know, give us a recommendation.
Yeah, so that's actually sort of what I was going to ask, is, is this something that can be, is this a matter of just boosting the salary range in this type, in this particular position, or is this, or is it a function of the fact that we're in an extraordinary boom cycle? And I'm just trying to figure out, how do you fix it? And is it, what, do you have a solution, or I mean, do you have an idea of what you think, so that it's not an ongoing problem? Or, and then I guess the other thing I was, I wanted to ask you, I'm sure you've thought about this, but if, like, you know, if normal is 50, and we're, you know, in a cycle right now where it's 100, is there, do you have like that level, that optimal level that you're kind of aiming for, to staff for? Because obviously, nobody staffs for a peak, and nobody staffs for the bottom. I was just wondering if that's, if, just any insight on that?
Yeah, I have put a lot of thought into it, and, you know, even with the workload that we're at now, if it was towards the higher-end additional resources, we would still be able to keep additional resources working full-time if there was a slowdown or recession. Also, I think there's, like I said, a couple of things you'd have to do. One is you'd have to look at the pay scale overall throughout the organization and compare it to similar organizations that keep taking our employees, because people who, you know, keep going to the same places to work, they're not moving. You know, they're living, most of them are living around in our region. You know, they're commuting sometimes farther to go work at these other places, so I think it's, you know, just to be really competitive with the salaries that we have with our neighboring cities and in additional resources, you know, in order to have, in order to keep that level of service and customer service really good, it's just to have the additional resources.
Okay, thanks.
We've had two building inspectors leave us for significantly higher pay, so I do think it is a salary issue, but it's also a permanency issue. And so I never like to use the term "permanent" when you're talking about employment, but a regular position. So we've had multiple turnover in that temp permit specialist position, because we could never guarantee more than a year or so, and so whenever they were offered a position that was a regular position in another city, they took it. And so that's why we're a training ground. The other thing I want to point out, we're seeing this really accentuated in Brian's department because of the cyclical nature of his, of that area, but we're also seeing just general demand for good talent, just in all of our departments, and we've had some, a little bit of turnover in the engineering field, and I know good civil engineers are at a premium right now. And, oh, I just lost my train of thought. Oh, well. Somebody talk.
I'd like to point out one other thing real quickly. A lot of times, people think that bigger cities pay more, but unfortunately, when you go to the bigger cities and organizations, you don't do as much as you do here in Kenmore. You know, we have a smaller organization, we wear multiple hats, all of our employees are busy from the time they get here to the time they leave. And what I'm, I have heard from the two people that have left to go to other bigger organizations is that they're bored. So they're definitely not going to another organization and doing, doing more to make that additional compensation.
Yeah, so there's things we can offer.
The new job.
Yeah.
The board of the new job.
Get more.
That's right.
Yeah.
What's that?
I would also comment on the mixed position. The mixed position could be causing some of the challenge, too, being, you know, part engineer and part code enforcer. That may make people not only skill, but just not their interest. They may like one or the other and not really both.